Just want to let folks know mics are live at the moment. Testing, testing. All right. Also, so just please, if there are conversations in the midst of the meeting, please keep them to yourselves. Your mics will be live, so just be cognizant of that. Also, if there is public testimony, I ask that folks, once we get to the testimony portion of the meeting, please line up behind the podium and we'll acknowledge you and give you two minutes to speak. Ready? Okay, we're at 1:05. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we of course have myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the Fourth District, Mark Conway; Councilman Burnett, representing the Eighth District;
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohen, representing the First District; Councilman Costello, representing the Eleventh District; Councilman Glover, representing the Thirteenth District;
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Porter, representing the Tenth District;
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Councilwoman Ramos, representing the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We also have today a visitor to the committee, Councilwoman McCray, representing the Second District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Today, we have four bills that we're going to be going through. First, we're going to touch on two for which we intend to vote on, and then the final two will be for discussion. The first bill we're going to dive into is Bill 22-0191, Homeless Shelters and Transitional Housing Units: Human Trafficking Notice Requirements. For the purpose of requiring homeless shelters and transitional housing units within the city of Baltimore to place a notice regarding a certain human trafficking prevention hotline in certain locations, providing that the required human trafficking notices may be obtained from the United States Department of Homeland Security's Blue Campaign website, providing for certain penalties, and generally relating to the human trafficking notice requirements for homeless shelters and transitional housing units. This bill was introduced on January 10, 2022, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. I will open the floor to notes from the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So, just as a reminder, this is a building on a number of bills that we've passed through this council related to notification requirements for human trafficking so that we can make sure that we're bringing information directly to where survivors or victims may be. This bill would require the posting of resource information in homeless shelters and transitional housing.
Do you mind taking off your mask and speaking up because we've got some extra sounds going on?
No worries. This would require notice requirements in homeless shelters and transitional housing units throughout the city of Baltimore so that as people are in these special housing units, they are getting access to the human trafficking hotline, both the phone number and text message as well. And so, there are five amendments related to this bill that we walked through in the last hearing on this, but I'm happy to go through them again. But in short, they're all friendly amendments that have come from the mayor's office and the mayor's office of homeless services, as well as a few other agencies to add clarifying language on the types of programs, a clarification of what we mean by transitional housing, so it's in alignment with HUD guidelines, and some clarification. And number five adds clarity around where the posting and signage should be in the homeless shelter or transitional house.
Mr. Chair, move the amendments.
Got a motion to move the amendments. Second. Got a second. All right. So moved by Ramos, seconded by Glover. Conway, yes? Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Aye.
Glover?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
And Ramos?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to move as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Conway, yes? Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Aye.
Glover?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
All right, that bill will move on to second reader at our next council meeting on Monday. Our next bill will be 21-0094, Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Establishment: The Hometown Heroes Act. For the purpose of providing for the establishment and implementation of a public safety apprenticeship program for Baltimore City, providing for the development and oversight of the program by the Baltimore City Fire Department, in partnership with certain other public safety agencies in Baltimore City, establishing the purposes of the program and requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department report annually certain information to the mayor and city council, and requiring the report to be made available on the department's website. This bill was introduced on June 8, 2021, and was sponsored once again by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Flow yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So, as a reminder, this bill is in order to really build on the pathways that we have for young people in Baltimore City into careers in public safety. And so, this bill would establish, encode, a public safety apprenticeship program, the Hometown Heroes Program, that would create an apprenticeship program for students in city schools, both public, private, and charter schools. But the key piece is for public safety agencies, so it would be Baltimore City Fire Department, Baltimore City Police Department, and there would be an internship program for the Office of Emergency Management. The amendment, we went through the amendments in the last session, but number six is the most substantive revision to date, which should be up, and all of the committee members should have. There was some concern about the immediate establishment of a minimum number of cadet positions in the Fire Department and Police Department, and concerns raised about capacity in each agency to immediately bring on 25 students per year. So after conversation with Baltimore City Public Schools, Fire Department, Police Department, and the mayor's office, we came to an agreement to phase in the number of cadet positions over time so that the agencies could scale up their capacity and so that the school system could effectively implement the program, which is, I think, the most important piece to all of us, is making sure that we have something that works and works well, so that we're able to put our young people on a legitimate pathway into very well-paying and honorable jobs in public safety in Baltimore City. So the amendment number six would, in fiscal year '23, allocate 10 positions for EMT and fire cadet, 10 police cadets. In fiscal '24, it would be 15 EMT, fire cadets, and 15 police cadets. Fiscal '25 would be 20 EMT slash firefighter cadets and 20 police cadets. In 2026, it'd be 25 EMT and fire and 25 police cadets. And starting in 2027, there would be a continuation of that floor, should the budget allocation for this program remain for a minimum of 25 cadets on this career track. And that's the biggest revision since our last hearing on this, which I think is a pretty big deal, and would note that the mayor has allocated funding in the budget for this program.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Burnett, and I appreciate all the work that you've done to find some way to make this work with the agency. I want to give the agency an opportunity to speak if you have anything you want to add, given the latest amendment.
No, sir, we don't have anything to add. We just want to thank Councilman Burnett for working, him and his staff, with us in this process.
Excellent. We'll open up the floor to public testimony. Do we have any public testimony on the Hometown Heroes Act? Please.
It's been so long since I've been in this building and in this room. It's so nice to see everyone, even though everyone's masked. For the record, Michelle Wurzberger, Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I want to echo what the chief said, and we appreciate the sponsor working with us, taking our concerns into account. I know the mandatory hiring requirement is being phased in. I just want to put on the record, we still have some anxiety about that and the ability to get folks to be interested. We want them, we absolutely want them. We're trying to counter this anti-law enforcement sentiment that is going around, but we are pulling up our sleeves and we are already getting to work. So, I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Wurzberger. Any other folks?
I hope you have a question.
Yes.
For Director Wurzberger, if you all could share your community engagement strategy or some type, you know, your community engagement strategy to get more young people in this program, can you just refresh my memory of that? And that's a question for Director Wurzberger or Chief Ford as well.
Sir, I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
I was, sorry. I was saying, with regard to your community engagement strategy, you mentioned that you're trying to get more young people in this great program. Could you share some of the high-level sentiments of that strategy?
Yeah, and as you might imagine, given that we're finally, hopefully, coming out of COVID, you know, our efforts have been thwarted over the last couple of years. I know that our Deputy Commissioner of Administration, D.C. Gillis, has been having a conversation with the school system, which you all had talked about. I think coordinating with them directly will be really helpful and will be instrumental in us actually getting to the kids who are eligible and interested, to very key components.
No, that works perfectly, and you know, I think having more engagement from the council office as well. We are connected with a lot of organizations within our respective districts, and so that may be an opportunity to get that information out as well.
Yeah, I think that would be fabulous. I know Councilman Burnett has reached out to us on a couple of hiring events that he has been involved in, and we're trying to get some folks there. But yeah, and as we get ready to release our kind of second iteration of our recruitment strategy, all those like flashy videos that we showed you some time ago, we've refreshed them, as well as the cadet video that we did before, we've refreshed that as well. So, we're looking forward to being able to push that out to you all, so you all can push that out to your folks as well. Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee or councilmembers? Excellent. I'll entertain a motion to move the amendments.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Conway, yes? Burnett?
Yes.
I assume so. Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Aye.
Glover?
Yes.
Porter?
Aye.
Ramos?
Yes.
All right, the amendments move as a package. Is there a motion to move the bill as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Conway, aye. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Aye.
Glover?
Yes.
Porter?
Aye.
Ramos?
Yes.
This move, this bill moves favorable with amendments to second reader on the council meeting. We'll move on to our third bill. Our third bill today is Bill 22-0199, Firefighter Safety Act. For the purpose of establishing basic operational approaches to risk assessment, outlining emergency response rules of engagement, requiring all fire suppression personnel employed by the Baltimore City Fire Department to be equipped with digital audio and video recording devices by a certain date, requiring the implementation of a safety and risk management system, defining certain terms, establishing reporting requirements, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on February 22, 2022, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Danielle McCray. Councilmember McCray, flow yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to share remarks regarding this critical piece of legislation. In February, I introduced a package of legislation focused on firefighter safety and the vacant housing crisis that we have here in this city. We know that vacant structures pose extreme threats to the safety and security of all, notably our firefighters. And with that being said, I would like to set the stage for why we're here today. On October 28, 2015, three firefighters were injured while fighting a fire in a vacant structure located at 205 South Stricker Street. On February 23, 2019, a firefighter fell through the second floor of a vacant structure fire in the 1400 block of McHenry Street. On February 5, 2020, four firefighters were injured when they fell into the basement of a vacant structure fire after the first floor gave way in the 1700 block of Cliffview Avenue. On July 24, 2021, a firefighter underwent surgery after falling through a floor while battling a vacant row home fire in the 2600 block of Wood Brook Avenue. On October 31, 2021, two firefighters were injured while fighting a row home fire in a structure that collapsed on them in the 2900 block of West Baltimore Street. On November 15, 2021, three firefighters were injured while fighting a vacant row home fire that partially collapsed on them in the 1700 block of West North Avenue. And on April the 12, 2022, a firefighter fell through the floor of a vacant structure fire in the 1800 block of Asquith Street. This sample, sample size of incidents illustrates the extreme danger and risks that our firefighters face on a daily basis. So while some have inferred that this legislation is a knee-jerk reaction to the tragedy that occurred on January 24, 2022, I believe it's a call to action in an attempt to address a pattern in practice of a culture that continuously puts firefighters at risk and often leads to them getting injured. These incidents show that being known as an aggressive, aggressive interior firefighting organization is something that maybe, maybe, should not be consistently applauded but reevaluated. As I previously mentioned, the legislation was crafted based upon best practices set forth by the National Fire Protection Association and the International Association of Fire Chiefs. It will install three critical safety measures to protect our firefighters. It establishes concrete rules of engagement for fighting fires in vacant structures. It requires firefighters to be equipped with in-mask thermal imaging cameras and audio recording devices, which have proven to increase safety and firefighting efficiency. And it requires that the department's safety and risk management officer to directly report to the fire chief to ensure the implementation and enforcement of safety programs, and that they're backed with the full authority of the agency head. If you will allow, Mr. Chair, I'd like to show two short video clips, one of the in-mask thermal imaging camera being recommended for firefighters, and the other of a helmet camera being recommended for the battalion chiefs and safety officers. And again, I do thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues, for taking the time to discuss this crucial piece of legislation to ensure that our fire department is in alignment with national best practices to enhance the health and the safety of our firefighters.
Tools like this to our service, it is, it's quantum leaps forward in our ability to do our job and to save lives.
Firefighters are calling this a game changer, and it's in my hometown. The Raytown Department is the first in the entire nation to use it.
Pretty incredible new here at 1041 Action News anchor Richard Sharp got to see how this new camera can help save lives.
The flames are real, but this is just practice, an important test.
He starts to come up like that?
First, the mask goes on. Then firefighters go in.
For so long, we've been taught how to do our job in the dark.
Before today, they had to carry a thermal imaging camera.
This is what a thermal imaging camera looks like. The problem is, it's a separate device, so they have to put down their hose in order to use the thermal imaging camera.
My captains had the camera in their hand and basically lost use of their dominant hand.
Not anymore.
When we add tools like this, it's quantum leaps forward in our ability to do our job and to save lives. It's really spectacular.
This new thermal imaging camera is mounted on the side of the mask, the display inside the mask.
It's great.
A tiny screen at the bottom.
With a mask, it's always on, always right in their field of view.
Small enough that it doesn't obstruct their view, but big enough to see perfectly in a fire.
So we're standing right next to the fire. I can see with the thermal imaging camera that it's 500 degrees right there. You just feel the heat. What's so interesting is firefighters normally have to use their hands in a thermal imaging camera like this, but with this one, it's in their mask, they can have both of their hands free and work around the fire. It's getting so hot, we got to get out of here.
The difference is incredible. I mean, I couldn't see when we went in there first.
It's almost like wearing a pair of bifocals, really.
In the corner of their eye, they can see the smoke, see the temperature of the smoke.
Having a thermal image display inside the mask means firefighters can see better.
We could immediately see that the fire was 470 degrees.
They don't have to look through a mask that may be covered by smoke to see the thermal imaging camera in their hand.
We have to hold that thing all the time, and because we have to hold it, our head has to be down looking at the screen.
Seeing better means they can move more quickly around a burning building, rescuing victims, getting out faster.
Now, our head can be up.
There are only 200 of these masks in existence so far. Most fire departments don't have any. The ones that do only get one or two to test. Raytown Fire got six, and they're already in service.
You have a live, working snapshot of the entire room.
They cost thousands less than regular thermal imaging cameras, with a price tag of around $2,000.
So from a safety standpoint, from my office, this is the best $2,000 I've spent.
It seems too good to be true. A tiny camera that doesn't cost a fortune and keeps firefighters even safer.
Come over here.
I'm Richard Sharp, 41 Action News.
Wow, terrific look by Richard there. The Raytown Fire Department got the cameras at a conference for firefighters.
We're now going to take a look at a shorter clip of helmet cameras.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. The committee will now hear from agency representatives, so please come to the podium, use the microphone, and please state your name. We're going to start off with the Fire Department.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. We, you're asking for our position on the bill?
Yes.
Yes, we stand by the report we submitted. We have major concerns of the bill.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
I said, we stand by our report submitted. We have significant concerns on the bill.
Okay. We'll go through the reports, and then if folks have questions, we'll do that. Next up, we've got the Law Department. Do we have a representative from the Law Department in the room? We do not.
So, Mr. Chair, I don't see a representative from the Law Department here at the moment, but I will get somebody up here in the short term, or we'll make sure we can speak on their behalf.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Baltimore City Office of Information Technology.
Mr. Chair, Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, speaking on behalf of BCIT. They stand by the report. They have no objection to the bill, but they don't really have a role based upon the way the bill is written.
Thank you, Nina. And lastly, I've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. Mara James, Assistant Budget Director for the Department of Finance. Is this better? I'm joined as well...
Mara, do you mind taking off your mask while you speak?
I have a small child that's unvaccinated. I'd rather not.
Can you speak up?
Yeah, I can speak up, for sure.
Thank you.
I'm joined here today also by Sean K. Stanley from our Office of Risk Management. We stand by our report. We defer to the Fire Department on this bill. We do include a cost estimate, which was based on the body cameras and the costs that we know from what the Police Department utilizes. We don't have the details of the cameras that were just shown in that video, but we can update our estimate as needed as well. Our estimate for that would be about $2 million, based on the full staffing. So in the bill, there's a first-year camera staff amount, and then a second year and beyond. It's for the full fire suppression unit, so that's what our estimate is for as well. Again, happy to answer any questions. Yeah, stand by our report.
All right, I will open the floor to questions, and I'll actually go right to the bill sponsor. Council?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, this question, this series of questions is going to be for Chief Ford. And Chief Ford, you were a deputy fire chief within Fulton County, Atlanta, Georgia, from 2003 to 2007, and during that time, the department developed and implemented a standard operating procedure that stated, "Members shall not be committed to interior firefighting operations in any structure that is obviously abandoned, derelict, or is believed to be unoccupied." Can you talk to us about your position in Fulton County and what role, if any, did you have in the direction, excuse me, the creation or administration of that policy?
Yes. Fulton County is, and just like, now it's going to be, comparisons from organization and municipality from municipality are going to be different. Fulton County is significantly different. Fulton County in particular has...
Can you make sure you speak up?
Sure, I'm sorry.
You're competing with...
I'm sorry. Fulton, the question was that I served as a deputy chief in particular over safety and member services from 2003 to 2008 in Fulton County, Georgia, 2007 to be exact. And the question that was raised is that we had a policy saying that derelict or vacant buildings you should not go into. Our MOGs, our SOGs, our SOPs, our policies, but their guidelines as well. But their circumstances are significantly different in this way. Fulton County is more rural than it is urban. The city of Atlanta, which sits in Fulton County, is urban, but that's separate. They have their own fire department. Fulton County has separate detached homes, huge ones in certain circumstances. So when a fire happens at this facility and it's a vacant structure, nothing else is involved, we didn't have the homeless problems that we have here, there's no concern other than that structure. Here, when fires start, it could cause a whole plethora of issues beyond that residence because there are several residences attached to that, and furthermore, we have several homeless people. So there has to be a determination that's made by the company officer or the battalion chief at that time to make the decision. That's where my stance is a little bit different. That's why they're trained differently also.
Yes, sir. So I totally appreciate the background and you explaining the differences between the municipalities, our city and also Fulton County. What was your role, if any, in the creation or the administration of that policy? I just want to know what your role was in that policy.
I updated the policy, but the policy was already there at my arrival.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that answers my question, so I'm going to move on to the next one.
Yes, ma'am.
How soon into your administration as the fire chief of Baltimore City were you made aware of a possible culture of aggressive interior firefighting operations at the scene of vacant structures?
Not just at vacant structures, in general, fire services do have very aggressive policies, I mean, have very aggressive cultures. Our culture is more aggressive than many. I was aware of it rather soon, and I did go out, and we put policies in place to try to mitigate that. We trained our officers. I've even gone out from station to station to station, from shift to shift to shift, to explain the culture of safety that we're trying to encourage.
Okay. So this is going to be a follow-up to that. Given your experience in the fire service and knowing the dangers associated with aggressive interior attacks in vacant structures, did you issue any orders or policy revisions to... did you issue any orders or policy revisions to stop this practice as it was done in Fulton County? If so, when, and if not, why not?
Yeah, I'll go back and still say Fulton County is different, so that's not, it's not necessarily comparable. But I brought in a safety officer. Our safety, our fire department got our members safety certified who came on the scene, who negotiated those issues. Also, we introduced safety and training programs within our officers. Those are the ones that make the decisions when they get on the scene.
As a last follow-up, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
If you had to estimate what percentage of fire departments across the nation currently allow aggressive interior attacks at vacant structures, what would that amount be?
Ma'am, I don't know. I don't know. I couldn't tell you that. I could tell you that, that each department has its own needs, and as you go from department to department, each one's different. I mean, we had conversations with other municipalities on vacancies even, even before this incident, well before this incident, because everyone's been struggling with how to come up with a policy, especially those that have significant homeless individuals in their community, or, or a drug problem that we do have. So everyone's been struggling with trying to navigate that policy. Case in point, we, we, we had an individual pass away in a vacant home about a week ago, and, and it does happen.
Thank you, Chief Ford. Mr. Chair, obviously I have a ton of questions, but I understand that the committee members may have some as well.
Sure, we'll quickly go around, and then we'll get back to you, if that's okay. Any questions from the committee at the moment? Please, go ahead, Councilman. Sure, we're going to start this way and work our way over. We'll start with you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Ford.
Yes, sir.
For joining us today. So can you speak just broadly to what are some of the challenges that firefighters face when trying to extinguish a fully-involved vacant structure fire and a May Day is called? Can you just walk us through what the protocols are?
Tell you what, I'll, I'll let one of my chiefs of operations speak on, and I'll speak after him.
Chief Tommy Tosh? Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Deputy Chief Tosh, I work in operations on sea shift. So, I'm sorry, could you repeat your question so I don't get anything missed?
So what are, what are some of the challenges that firefighters face when trying to extinguish a fully-involved vacant structure fire and a May Day is called?
Okay. So, from the beginning, when you, when you observe the initial units arriving on the scene of an incident, it appears to be chaos, and it is. It's organized chaos. It's what we train on. That's what we get, we get hired and trained to do. So your incident commander, when a May Day is called, and you have a, first thing is, you should be knocking down that structure if it's fully involved. You should definitely be knocking it down. But if you have a report of people trapped, then you want to diligently attempt to get in there to see if there's any chance of viable life. So in that aspect, when a May Day is called, additional resources need to be called immediately, and you immediately have to go into a phase of attempting to find out where the individual's last location was that's calling the May Day from your crew. And if you would potentially have somebody trapped as well, somebody hanging out of a third-story window that disappears, you're also concerned about that resident too, because the resident is just as important as our member. So it, it's basically resources is what we need. That's what you're calling for. That's why we have standards on contacting communications as an incident commander, calling for additional resources for a working fire, second alarm, third alarm, fourth alarm, so forth, what you need.
Okay.
Is that good?
Well, so given those, because I think what we're, a lot of the discussion on this, on the last incident has been around, I guess, is it prudent to use or to prioritize extinguishing the bulk of the fire externally before entering the premise, the premises to ensure firefighter safety?
Every structure fire is different, and we always have to keep in mind that there is a such thing as spontaneous combustion, but 90% of the time, that fire is caused by something. So we do have an issue at times where somebody's nefarious, and they're doing things to inject harm into the community, but there's also a large portion of the time where you actually have a citizen that inadvertently ends up trapped because they did something and weren't paying attention. So every situation is different. I was on a four-alarm fire last week on West Baltimore Street. The units pulled up and immediately went to exterior operations because they could see the volume of fire, and they could tell that that building was getting ready to collapse potentially, and they focused on the structures next to it. So everyone's different. Every fire is different.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Porter.
Thank you. Chief Ford, I just wanted to, one of the things that has really been challenging as of late is response times in relation to getting to said fires. Can you share how much time does the National Fire Protection Association give responding units enough time to get to the fire? Can you share that? And then I have a follow-up question to that, sir.
There, the benchmarks are different. There are six to eight minutes pertaining to what the focus is on that of first-arriving units, is the first responders who can provide EMS support for somebody that may have a heart attack or something like that, because after six minutes, you start getting to the point where brain cells start dying, and it makes it impossible to, you know, save. There is a standard of 90% of the time, the first unit, what time is that? Four minutes. Within four minutes of them receiving the call, meaning the units actually being dispatched.
Okay, and that's specific to Baltimore, four minutes?
I'm sorry?
And is that specific to Baltimore?
That's specific. That is a national fire protection.
National standard, okay. So where does Baltimore fall in that, in that, in relation to that?
Last we checked, and Chief Cashin, I think you pulled the numbers not too long ago, so I know he's looking them up right now.
Okay, no worries.
But our, historically, we've, we've been well within the 90 percentile of those first-arriving units and the subsequent units that are there to create a fire force.
Okay. And then my second question has to do with the evaluations of emergency incident operations. Do you all conduct those evaluations, and how often are they conducted, and is that information publicly reported?
Post-incident analysis are done specifically on significant incidents, but within each battalion, they can choose to do certain events, and they're written and shared amongst the, the teams, so we can learn and better perform what we do.
Is that information publicly reported?
I can make, it's, it's not necessarily public recorded. It is, I was going to say it's not necessarily public recorded, but we can make it publicly recorded.
Okay. One of the reasons why I actually elevate that, we've had significant issues related to hazardous incidents, not only in District 10, but all across the city.
Yes, ma'am.
And one of the issues of the community members is, one, how that information is being shared to, to the community, when it's being shared to the community, and also any follow-up as it relates to any type of agency response in relation to said incident. How is that being, and when is that being shared with the community?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, you're, you're talking about as far as specifically hazardous material incidents?
Hazardous material, anything related to fire, you know, those, those types of issues.
Those, those reports are available to the public.
Okay.
And I mean, anyone can get those reports. And actually, when people have hazardous material on premises, there's certain public reporting they're supposed to do anyway.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I do have follow-up questions, but I'll wait until the next round of questioning. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions as well. Chief Ford, so many NIOSH firefighter fatality reports list the following recommendation as a critical factor that can influence the line-of-duty deaths, to ensure that an initial size-up of the incident scene is conducted before beginning interior firefighting operations. What is the role of the first-arriving company at the scene of the fire, and what is the subsequent role of the first-arriving battalion chief?
I apologize. Could you repeat that? Your voice is extremely low.
Sure, I'll, I'll speak more loudly. So the many NIOSH firefighter fatality reports list the following recommendations as a critical factor that can influence the line-of-duty deaths, to ensure that an initial size-up of the incident is conducted before beginning interior firefighting operations. What is the role of the first-arriving company, and what is the subsequent, subsequent role of the first-arriving battalion chief?
Okay. So, so that's covered under our 601 and 602 series in our manual procedures. First-arriving company could either be an engine or a truck. In some cases, it's a medic, but most times, it's an engine or a truck. The officer would immediately take command. They would give a brief initial report of what they saw. Depending on their unit, if they were an engine, they'd be hooking up to a viable water source and leading into the building so they could initiate a quick knockdown or an interior attack, depending on whether or not it was occupied or vacant, or whatever structure that they were falling into. If it was a truck, they'd be setting up their, that's the aerial ladder, as well as ground ladders, that's more forcible entry type stuff and ventilation stuff. So that's all covered within our procedures for giving that brief initial attack, a brief initial report through communications for the responding units. The battalion chief is going to hear that when they're on their way in. Usually, the battalion chief is, is there not very long after the first two units arrive, if not before.
So the arriving unit goes in?
I'm sorry?
The arriving unit will go into the building?
They, they will initially do, do the size-up, make a determination on what they're going to do. So you have the options covered underneath our SOPs, whether or not they need to do a fast, a fast attack to knock down. You get credible, you get credible reports from people standing on the street that Ms. Johnson might be inside the building, or they saw somebody go in the building. So then you have to make that split-second determination based on the volume of fire and what you're faced with. If you can get into the building, if you have to make a quick knockdown. But that is all covered under, under the 601 and 602 series for operations.
Got it. And so what, what training and policies does the department have in place to aid incident commanders in making the determination of when to be offensive or defensive?
We have company officer training. We have two-in-one training. We're introducing a, we're in the process of introducing a simulator as well very soon, and, and we're going to use that as part of the training component. Not only the training component, when we have people that need retraining, we send them back through that. In fact, we're planning on sending everybody back through and possibly use it as part of the promotional process. So it's, it's, and, and also, we have a, a fire EMS committee that we developed several years ago, and one of the things that they did, they had a couple responsibilities, but one of the things they've worked on recently is developing a, a task book that basically they have to get signed off by their supervisor as they, as they go through the process of learning certain things.
Got it. My, my second question, related but different. So rowhouse fires have been linked to a significant, significant number of injuries and deaths among firefighters across the nation. Knowing the risks that firefighters encounter when entering these structures, does the fire department currently have an annual community risk assessment program in place to understand the complexities of rowhouses and basement fires in the city? If yes, can you explain why, and if not, why not?
Yes, and it needs to be updated. It's, it's dated now. It's dated, I think, back to 2013. It needs to be updated at this time. That's one of the things we've discussed as well.
Okay.
91.06%.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions on this side?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Chief Ford, can you? Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Ford. Can you detail the fire department's opposition to this bill? Can you go through it?
I will outline what our concerns are about the bill, yes. Let me work from...
Our response, please.
Oh, sure.
Under Section 7.3 of this bill, the council's proposing a number of policies and procedures that are already in policy, some of which, and I'm going to kind of go around a few, forgive me, some of which are policies that we recently created. Case in point, that, and, and it goes back to the question that you asked about individuals knowing what's going on on the scene. In order for someone to enter a structure now, they have to have a, a perspective of the Charlie side or the backside of the structure. Not only do they have to have a front-side scene sized up, they need to know what, they need to get a report on the backside of the structure. That was a policy that just was a recent, recently created. For, and for example, the state standard for travel over the speed limit in, in the state is already, already says that emergency responders should travel with due regard. So there's already a standard for that. Section 7.3 is already covered in MOP 601, which outlines command responsibility related to the arrival of, the arrival and sequence of units and officers at the scene of a fire, and establishes a framework for outlining activities and responsibilities assigned to command. As of, as a result of January 24th, incident MOP 601-6 was created to specify, to specifically address the unique operational issues related to vacant buildings. And that's what I was talking about, the fact that you have to know what's going on in the front and back. The department is also working with other city agencies to better identify and document the conditions of a vacant building, the vacant buildings across the city. Currently, our department and housing are working to make sure we identify all the structures, have them in our CAD system. Right now, when, when, when units arrive on the scene, if it is a vacant, unsafe structure, a red box shows up on the screen that tells them that's what it is, if we have the actual address. Now, if they get on the scene and we get a different address, they're required to report the address, the new address, and consequently, when that's readmitted in, in the CAD, that pops up on the screen, and also is articulated to the teams that show up on the scene. That's part of what, what the process is that we're going through right now. And also, we're working on marking it as well. We're coming up with a marking plan, a new marking plan, that does not, that would not seem unusual if you saw it, but we'd know exactly what it is if we saw it.
Yeah, when you're done with, just as FYI, when you're done and the department is done with that particular policy, could you submit it to the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we would be very interested in that, and also helping in any way, because this was a big deal that you and I have talked about already before in terms of...
Yes, ma'am. And we've already, the, the marking system, we've already tested on unsafe structures, and we haven't gotten it to the point where we can see it well at night. That's part of our challenge right now.
Can you just clearly state, just so that everyone, what the marking system is, what it was intended to do, just so that folks...
It's literally going to be an address. It's going to be the address, but it's going to be identified in a different way, and we're trying to make it in a way that, that when lights shine across it, or something shines across it, that it illuminates, and you know exactly what it is.
A marking system on the building?
Yes, back and front.
So that when, you know, you get there, you can see and what's going on?
Yes.
The other, just on this subject, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, the, you had mentioned the issue of the incorrect address, and this has happened twice in my district, where the 911 call is directed to the 3,500 block, but the fire's on the 3,700 block.
Yes.
So you all are directed in that general direction, but then you see that the fire's on the 3,700 block, and make the correction, but also because of the marking on a vacant building, you're able to, that, that should be okay, right?
Yes, should be. And also, when they, when they realize that they're at a different address, they should, they're required within policy to report the new address, and at that time, the CAD should populate, if we have the information, the CAD should populate whether or not it's a safe or unsafe structure as well.
So going back to my original question, there were two sections in particular that you had highlighted in your opposition.
Yes.
7.3 and 7.4, basically. So the next section was the cameras. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The next section that you were concerned about was the cameras?
Yes, I was moving to the next.
Yeah, that was my fault for distracting you. Sorry.
No, that's okay. The concern we have with the recording devices is that, and, and we, we discussed this, if it was actually, it read like audio/video cameras. The technology has not reached the point where you can actually go in with a video camera and, and, and within it, within the fire frame, within the frame of the fire, and actually receive good video. Now, in the video we just saw, yes, you could see specifically outside. That's why they showed a lot of things outside. But when you go inside and you have an enclosed building, it is not like the movies. You cannot see your hand in front of your face. And I hate I didn't do it. Chief Savella and Chief Shiloh, who's over training, literally made me a...
Chief Savella and Chief Shiloh, who's over training, literally made me a video, and they, they went into training, which is a clean burn environment, where we actually burn wood. But if you go into anything else, you're going into plastic, rubber, things, foam within couches, that burns dirty. So it's super black. You literally can't see your hand in front of your face, so at that point, video cameras are not effective. Thermal imaging cameras, we already have those, but we can install, in fact, that was part of the question, we can look at, we can look seriously at that, that was part of the conversation we've even had, of the effectiveness of it and whether or not we should do it. But you have to understand, what, what that is going to help you do is know where the fire is, know where the hotspots are. It's not, it's not going to tell you the condition of the building or anything like that. It'll tell you the extent of the fire, yes, but there, there are other information that has to be, that has to fall in the wheel well of the leadership who are there to manage incident, whereas every incident, every structure, every situation is different.
Okay, thank you. Those probably equals my two questions for now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair McCray?
Thank you. I want to, I want to go back to, I have a few follow-ups for Councilwoman Ramos's questions, and let me just get to my notes. So you stated, and I'm, I'm happy, that there's going to be an additional set of a marking system that you guys are working with, with DHCD on.
Yes.
But one thing I want to point out is that that recommendation, a recommendation came within a NIOSH report. That NIOSH report was after the line-of-duty death of Lieutenant James Bethia seven years ago, that made the recommendation that our Fire Department and our City Building Department, which would be DHCD, work together to identify marked buildings that present hazards to firefighters and the public. So, can you tell me, why did it, why did it take so long for the Fire Department to work with DHCD, or was there already something that was happening that possibly we didn't know about during those seven years, between the time that that report was issued and today?
Right. After the report was, after the report occurred, the focus was trying to put that data into the CAD. That was the initial, initial process of trying to put that data in the CAD. The challenge that we're going to continuously have with that kind of data is our vacant and our, even our unsafe vacant structures are going to every evolve, almost every month. So our focus was to initiate putting information in the CAD initially. I don't have control over other agencies, I only have control over ours, and that's what we were trying to focus on.
I'm going on the record, and I'm saying this, that report came out seven years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't feel that it should have took in seven years and then this for DHCD and the Fire Department, and I know that you guys already collaborate on items, for us to have a...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last thing you said.
For us to have a concrete plan now. I don't think that it should have took seven years, so I'm just going to go on the record and say that before I move on to this next question.
Yes, ma'am.
When a firefighter is injured at the scene of a fire, does the Fire Department have a process where the incident commander and the safety and risk management officer conduct a post-incident analysis report to see if any internal policies or NFPA standards were violated?
An injured firefighter, right?
Yes, sir.
So, right now, I oversee safety and member services. So if a firefighter gets injured on a fire ground, there are certain reports, employee incident reports, specials that need to be filled out to identify what that, and be investigated by our safety office at that point in time. And then a determination will be made how that was, I'm sorry, how, usually I get in trouble because I speak too loud, so I try to be a little more calm. But yeah, we have specific reports and evaluations, post-incident analysis type reports that are filled out, that get reviewed by the safety office, by the shift commander's office, by the assistant chief of operations, on exactly what happened with the injury. We also track the type of injuries that we get, our safety office does that. And just recently, we put back into effect, I think, I have the memo over there, I'm not sure the exact date, we were tracking injuries that occurred in vacant dwellings fires. Then, of course, we got hit with ransomware that went away, we lost all that information. When I took over in operations back in 2020, I instructed the safety office to start tracking injuries that occurred in vacant dwelling fires, which they have been doing since, I have the memo, I think it's sometime in January 2020, so it's a clear identification of the type of dwelling that an injury does happen in.
Chief Savella, what compliance tools do you, what compliance tools do you currently have in place to ensure that internal accountability policies and procedures are being practiced on the fire ground?
Compliance tools? Well, they're reviewed by, by chiefs, and then we make a determination on, that's basically part of the recommendation that's made in the employee incident report, where the battalion chief and then the shift commander put their comments on those reports as it goes through the train. I have someone from the safety office here, if, you know, is Acting, Acting Captain Ty Spencer, she can give you more information on that.
I would love to hear her thoughts.
Good afternoon. So, what was the question again? Can you repeat it?
This one was regarding compliance tools. What compliance tools do you currently have in place to ensure internal accountability policies and procedures are being practiced on the fire ground?
So anytime we have a work in fire, our safety officers are dispatched out. Safety officer's primary job is to stand back and look for any deficiencies in any of our MOPs, SOPs, make sure people are following and doing the things that they're supposed to. On scene, the safety officer will step up and say, hey, this needs to be done, this person is this, just to make sure that people are being safe. If there is an injury, one of our safety officers does go out and they do a complete injury report on that, and they list any deficiencies that they may find. And like Chief Savella said, that information is then passed on to those chiefs for them to dive deeper into it, and whatever discipline comes from it, comes from the operation side.
Can you talk to us about the Fire Department's inspection and pre-plan and process? What does it consist of for responding to vacant structure fires specifically? When these inspections are conducted, who is actually responsible for inputting the information into the computer-aided dispatch system?
You're talking specifically about pre-planning and familiarization of areas?
That is correct.
Is this, is this for any occupancy of any kind?
This is for your inspections and your, and your pre-plan and process.
All right, so on Saturdays, we do home safety sweeps. During that time, the units are supposed to identify any issues that they find, not only in the occupied homes, but make any notations about what they see in those neighborhoods. We have a specific MOP to send that information, any type of information that they get concerning buildings in dangerous conditions, they're responsible for completing a report. It gets sent to our safety office, the safety office logs it into their database, and then it goes down to our IT department, which logs it into the CAD at that time. So that's basically put onto the company officers and the battalion chiefs while they're out doing safety sweeps, which is what part of our safety sweep program is. Also, another thing that, that should be done and is done, when you have qualified officers doing the job they're supposed to do, when you take, we take many, many, many medic assists, and when you're out in those neighborhoods, you should be evaluating those buildings and those dwellings to make sure that they're, if they come across something that may not be in the database, that they report it as required, because you never pass an opportunity to learn something, even if you weren't sent out there for a call. And you can also find those things out when we install smoke detectors as well. So, companies are instructed to do the job to thoroughly keep an eye on the neighborhoods they're going through so that they're aware of what they're dealing with, and that's how we pre-fire plan.
And this is going to be my last question, in case someone else has some questions as well. Chief Savella, and I think you may have mentioned this, you did say on Saturdays, but how many times within a calendar year do companies inspect the same properties within their box area to update possible condition changes?
Well, there are a lot of homes in Baltimore City, and we used to try to hit as many as we could as quickly as possible. We found that that was not the most productive way to do things. So we started to concentrate on quality rather than quantity, which is what we do. So based on the areas and the districts, any amount of occupied homes, we're hoping that they get through everything within, once a year, but again, that depends on, while they're out doing the safety sweeps, are they out there? Do they catch any runs? Do they catch any medic calls? Any of those type of things? Are the people home? So a lot of that is dependent on how many times they get in, get around, and get things completed. They all keep track of their areas in their company file, and we keep it on our fire records, the homes that have been inspected. So I can't give you the exact amount of times they do it, it's dependent on what, you know, it's a dynamic type of situation is kind of, I guess, the best way to explain it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll go back to this side. Are there other, are there other questions?
Oh, go ahead.
One second. Are there other questions on this side before we move on? All right, no questions, we can go back to this side.
Sure. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Chief Ford, I was doing some research, and the DriveCam program was implemented by the Fire Department. Can you share, can you tell us how it has reduced employee injuries and vehicle accidents, and how much money the city has saved since the program was first implemented?
I'm going to ask Acting Captain Spencer to start, and then I'll probably finish up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, I did not bring that data with me, but we do have it in our office as far as how much money it has saved the department since implementation. We use DriveCam as a learning experience for our drivers. We do go out to stations when we see certain driving behaviors. Our safety officers do go out, they speak to those drivers, and we do see improvement. We even bring them down to our office and go through lots of stuff. We also use it for new trainees, when they come in to actually start off, hey, these are the things that we don't want to see, these are the things that we do want to see to try to catch them early.
Okay, thank you for that. I look forward to that, to that information. I do have another question related to the board of inquiry that you commissioned after the lieutenant death, I mean, after the death of Lieutenant Bethia. It was found that the fire ground accountability system that was used during the incident wasn't adequate, and they recommended that criteria be implemented to establish a point of entry accountability system. Was the recommendation to assign a divisional group supervisor at every point or point of entry into the structure or confined space ever developed into departmental policies?
We made changes to those policies, I'll have Chief Tosh answer that.
So during, during that time period, we went back through our policies and our ability and our tools that we had at our hand. We were implementing new mobile data terminals at that time through IT, where we were able to actually implement a digital sign-in program for all members coming into work in the morning and leaving at shifts, no matter where they were. That stuff could be pulled up, so an incident commander could pull his MDT and see exactly who was on the apparatus, who was riding, where they were, and actually put a name with the unit and the face, so you knew exactly who they were. We also went back to the 601 series and updated the fire ground operations and command and implemented an accountability section at the very beginning of that that was missing prior as a shortfall, and that clearly dictated as well with the guidelines of making sure that we had our personal accountability tags on the apparatus every day when the officer came in. You had to physically sign in on the MDT when you arrived in the morning and sign out when you departed your shift, and then you would retrieve your tag and move, move forward from there.
I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Burnett?
Yep. So, I just had one, my first question was just a follow-up on the marking system. Are the giant Xs that have been placed on vacancies a part of that system?
We use them because they're there, but we're not adding more Xs. Is that what you're asking?
Well, a few of them, at least in my district, have appeared in the last few weeks.
We're not doing that. I, I heard about that. We, we haven't gone out and drawn Xs, at least officially from the Fire Department. We have not done that.
Are you aware where that?
I've seen them, but I don't know, I cannot attest who's doing it. Yes, I've seen them.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. So, sorry, back to the, so prior to the recent line-of-duty death that occurred, how long had the Office of Safety and Risk Management been operating without an appointed deputy chief in place?
The deputy chief, I have an acting deputy chief in office, so it's not that I don't have one there, and he's doing a very good job, but he's been acting, I think, about maybe nine months, eight or nine months-ish?
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you plan on, when, when do you plan on filling the position, and I guess, can you speak to just generally the current function and staffing levels of that office right now?
That office is in the process, first of all, I'm going to answer your last question first. That office is in the process of adding staffing now, they're training people and bringing them in and getting them, the ones that are interested are the ones that make it through the process of becoming safety certified. In respects to how soon I'm going to make the appointment, it's a, I just, not too long ago moved Chief Savella over to safety member services, so he's actually my safety guy, and he's over member services, which is safety and all the stuff that deals with people, in the same position I had in Fulton County, in fact. And we, we've been discussing about how to move forward with the position, but I wanted to give him time to fill out the new position he has.
Okay. My next question, back to the DriveCam program, does that software tell you how fast an apparatus was traveling? And if so, do we know, oh, sorry, give you an opportunity to come up.
What was the rest of it?
So, if it does tell you that, do we know how many miles on average do fire apparatuses travel over the speed limit?
It, all of the cameras are equipped with a GPS. They, most of the time, are able to tell you a general speed, it's not exact. How many miles over the speed limit on average, I would probably say 10 to 15 on average, but it really just depends on what street we're on, amount of traffic, just how many lanes, how much space, you know, the units have.
Okay. And on that, again, more on the software piece, what type of data retention infrastructure does the Fire Department currently use for the program?
It's run through Linux itself.
Linux, you said?
Yes. It's run through that program. We have, it's a cloud-based, so we are able to log in and see all the data that is downloaded, and able to download from that system to keep anything that we feel like we need to keep.
And are, how often are audits conducted, random audits conducted of the, the footage that comes through that system?
Of the videos themselves?
Yeah.
I, I personally watch every video that is downloaded. Right now, I'm still finishing up April, so I'm usually a month behind, so we're in May, I'm doing April. Last month, I was doing March, just to make sure we catch everything, because it takes some time for the videos to download sometimes. But I literally watch them all and go through, and we have discussions about what we see, what may be a trend.
And I guess, are, what authority do you have to, I guess, flag dangerous behavior? And what, what does the dangerous driving behavior, like if there are incidents that occur that stand out to you, what's the process from there as far as corrective action for the individuals involved?
So for myself, I report it to Acting Deputy Chief Knight, who then speaks with Chief Savella. They review it, and depending on what it is and the circumstances, it goes from there. I personally don't get into that discipline role.
Okay. That's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the Law Department. Elena's been floating around. Elena, do you want to at least stand by your report, just so we can get you on the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair. All right. Get back to your floor. Commander.
Do you mind just stepping to a microphone, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Elena DePietra from the Law Department. Yes, we stand by our report, and we did have concerns... our report and we did have concerns about a conflict with other charter provisions, so we couldn't approve the bill reform and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Any questions quickly for the Law Department before we move on to additional questions?
I actually do have a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, please.
So, and thank you, Mr. DePietro, for your thorough report. I appreciate it. In Section 73 of this legislation, it states the chief of the Fire Department shall develop policies and procedures that include the following requirements. In reviewing your agency report, can you just explain how does this section conflict with the Fire Chief's authority to supervise and direct the Fire Department?
Oops, I'm sorry, excuse me. In my opinion, supervise and direct are very broad words, so to me, that gives him authority to determine the operations of the department, the, you know, the modes of training and how they're going to approach different types of situations. So, I think, I believe it covers almost everything that deals with the operation of the department.
Thank you, Ms. DePietro.
Councilwoman Cassello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we go back, or is now an appropriate time? I wanted to go back to the Xs on the vacant structures.
Please do, yeah.
Just a couple of quick questions. Mr. Chair, if it's okay to exceed the two-question limit, all topic-related.
You've been patient the whole time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did the Fire Department at some point, I'm just generally curious, because I've seen these pop up, did the Fire Department at some point in time, were they responsible for putting Xs on buildings? Or was that DHCD?
It was before my time, literally before my time.
Is there, is there anyone historically that can speak to that? Again, just out of curiosity here?
Yeah, I was in the field then. So, we had, it was called a code x-ray program. What we did was, we had companies go around, we had placards, red placards with a white X. We would put them to the front and the back of a building. They were made like a cardboard-type material. Unfortunately, some neighborhoods and some blocks had big Xs on almost every house on the block. So, I believe some council people started getting some phone calls from some of their people that they represent. Then, we started getting some phone calls about we may want to hold up and then we, the funding for what we initially had bought to do, take care of the homes, we pretty much used them all up fairly quickly and the funding went away and we didn't have the funds to continue it. So, the program sort of just went dormant.
Got it. What year was that?
I'd have to look that up.
Round to a decade.
2011.
2011, okay.
Were you in the council then?
No.
Okay, good, see?
I would have more gray hair, Chief, what little's left.
Yeah, around 2011. And we had policies and procedures out on that, yeah.
And what was the purpose of putting the Xs up? I think I know the answer.
Well, it was, it was what we're trying to do now. It was self-identifying. We knew, so basically, we had a policy in place that if that building, if that had the X on it, we were not to enter unless there was a credible report of a person trapped. And that was the only way. And that was at that time. Now, of course, because they were cardboard, they didn't hold up very well, so they blew off or rain wormed out or something. So, we did, but we did make a concerted effort to identify those buildings at that point in time.
What was the source of the list of properties? Was it just DHCD's inventory of VBNs?
No, the companies did it themselves. So, the companies would go out, identify buildings they felt were in a dangerous condition and they would put the placards on.
So, not all vacancies? More at the discretion of the company?
No, they, it was, it was supposed to be for vacant buildings that were dangerous to go into. We wouldn't put that on an occupied building because we never know if somebody's going to be in there or not because it's occupied. But, we would put that in buildings that are in very danger, because...
Maybe I asked the question, I'm sorry, Chief, maybe I asked the question the wrong way. The company that would go out and place these signs?
Yes.
In their catchment area?
Mm-hmm.
How did that company determine which houses should get it? And before you answer, did they go to DHCD's vacant building notice list? Or was it from their own experience having worked in that neighborhood?
Their own experience working in that neighborhood, because one of the things is that we deal with is, you could look at the front of a dwelling and it looks like perfectly fine dwelling, but you walk around the back and it's not. So, the companies, the first two companies were the ones that were assigned to do that. And then what they would do was, once they did that, they should keep a list of it in their company office and then they would follow the MOP for the report of reporting it through Safety and then Housing would get it and our IT department would get it.
So, is there, is there any value, and so you guys stopped doing that maybe 11 or 12 years ago. Is there any value in your mind to having some type of designation that is like, clearly the Fire Department put this here, so are men and women known when they come out that this is, this is one of those?
Yeah, there's always value in identifying something that it's hard to tell from the exterior, especially at 3:00 in the morning, that you have something visibly. Because the other thing too is, based on our work schedules and those type of things, you may have a company pull up that may have four people that aren't normally assigned to that company. So, it's very important for them to be able to have a visual of what it is for them to know because they'll know.
Would it make sense that that marking be above the second floor so that most people wouldn't physically have access to alter it or to put their own marking and confuse folks?
As a civilian, yes, it would make sense. As a firefighter, if you have it on the second floor and fire's blowing out the first floor with thick black smoke pumping out, you're not going to see it. So, it's better to have it low where we know where it is so that we can see it, so that firefighters will know how to identify it.
So, is there a way to do it where it's not like, I know Councilman Burnett had a number of these in the 8th District, where there's something unique that can be done that's not just a simple someone coming out with a spray paint can or a piece of car for...
Chief Stewart's working on that right now. That's, he's the Assistant Chief of Operations. He's working on that program right now. I'm not involved in that, so he would have to speak on that or the chief would.
Is he here?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, to summarize, please correct me if I got any of this wrong. It sounds like the Fire Department sees value in some type of designation, visual designation like that?
Yes.
And is actively exploring?
Yes.
Doing something like that. Okay. Can you, at some point, like in the next, before the end of June, circle back with me with an update on the, you know, exploration of that effort or with the committee, rather?
We'll forward to, we'll forward to the committee. Yes, sir.
I'm in no rush, just genuinely curious. Seems like a common sense, good idea.
Yes. The concept is actually, like I said, to mark it in a way that would be of utility to us and does not, the red, the red Xs really frustrated the community. Even when I was here and I started visiting during neighborhood, community visits, people were angry about the red Xs. But, this would not be anything that would be aesthetically not familiar with people seeing. And if we put it in the position that every apparatus has the capacity as they go do their weekly neighborhood familiarization, that they have the capacity to put it on there right now, contact CAD, have CAD put it in the system right then, then we'll have it covered both electronically and both from an analog standpoint that they pull up on the scene and it should be there. Now, we, I'll readily admit that still we'll, we still will miss, we still will miss some.
Yeah. I'm indifferent if it's a purple question mark. It doesn't really matter to me. I just, as long as your folks know that's a problem so that they're able to assess the risk associated with it, so they make good decisions in the field and don't put themselves at jeopardy. But, the one piece I'm really curious about, when you get back to the committee by the end of June, is what the, how you determine the list of properties that get that. So, again, going back to what you all did in 10 and 11, is it what your folks in the field are seeing? Is it DHCD's VBN list? Is it resolving those two lists of information? Just curious. Don't expect an answer. Just be helpful if you guys think through that and circle back with us as to what that is.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The process is ongoing.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I just had a really, really dumb idea and maybe you guys completely ignore this, but I'll say it just in case it sparks better ideas. But, have we ever entertained, because the unstated thing, and maybe no one said it yet, but I'll say it, putting a bunch of yellow Xs or like very blatant Xs in certain communities is going to possibly put a stigma on those communities, one that is, in some cases, already there. Could there potentially be some sort of like invisible anchor swords for which officers, firefighters would have the opportunity to shine a black light or something like that to know this is a dangerous building without bringing attention to communities in a way? Once again, silly idea, but something to think about. I understand Councilwoman Ramos had a follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just along the same lines, as you can tell, this is a big deal for us. So, what, so when the original project was going on, because I remember those Xs, were the objections from the community simply just aesthetics? Or was it about perception of their community? Was it about, what was the objection?
When I got here and I was doing community meetings, it was, it was the visual aspect and the stigma that was associated with it. And you have to remember, at that time, we had just crossed also Katrina and people were marking buildings with Xs in Katrina. And people actually even said that to me when I was, when I was at neighborhood meetings. So, if, that, my perspective may be a little dated because I came in about three or four years later, but that was part of what was brought up to me.
And so, the work that you're doing on the policy that...
I'm sorry.
Uh-huh.
Good afternoon, Kim Washington. At the time, I oversaw the Office of Neighborhoods. And it was both aesthetically and the stigmatization of the community as one that had Xs on the vacant buildings when we were already sort of struggling with how we were going to deal with vacant properties. So, it was both.
Okay. And I know that we've now asked twice in this committee for the policy that you're coming up with, so I look forward to seeing that as well. But, yeah, this is going to be, I think that the, we'll have to see how it's all going to work. I was going to say, I can't, I'm not going to speak for every community. So, I think that it is important to do that, but also have the, you know, something pop up on the CAD screen?
Yes.
You know, with the information as well, which Housing has if the property has been designated with a VBN. There are those that are not designated with a VBN that we're still going through to try to make sure that those get processed. So, the second question I had while I'm, got the mic, is the report on the January 24th tragedy, when, I know that we're doing internal one, but then there's also the National Organization is doing one. When is that due?
I think, I think NIOSH has a turnaround date of about nine months, nine months or longer, because they, they have only a handful of people doing and they're continuously working. My group is still working on it. I had an update and a perspective from them a few, about a month ago, and we did address some policies that they saw. In fact, that's part of what you all have as well. But, I haven't spoken to them since. I will, I will get back with them soon to see where they are with it.
So, just a follow-up. So, they've been in communication with you and have made recommendations already that you're starting to put in place?
Some of which, yes.
And, but then, when we get the full report, then you'll let us know what actions you're putting in?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have a question for both the Fire Chief and for Finance with regard to the cameras, the ones that were showed here. I think it's an interesting idea. For our current vendor, for our thermal cameras, do our thermal cameras today have the ability to record? And I guess to the sponsor, do those cameras have the ability to record it?
Yes.
So, those have the ability to record. Do our cameras today have the ability to record our thermal cameras? Do they have the ability to record?
No, they don't.
They don't? So, they're just for visual?
Yeah, and we actually have been researching thermal cameras for about two or three years now, and we haven't found one that's very accurate, very reliable, besides the big heavy ones we carry. The ones in the masks made by Scott Corporation would make us buy all-new breathing apparatus, which would cost several million dollars. And I know people that use them and they, they're not very reliable.
Okay. And then, the other question I had was, in understanding for the finances report, with the prospect of replacing our current, our current technology, would that reduce our overall expenses? And it sounds like it's a little more complicated than that, but was that considered at all?
The details of what kind of cameras were needed were not clear from the bill for us, so I think we would need to work with Fire based on what the sponsor shared of these cameras to come up with an updated cost estimate of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, sorry, I'm Christopher Case, Assistant Chief of Support Services. I didn't say that at first.
Thank you, Chief Case. The second question I had is with reference to a recent case. So, on May 6th of this year, less than a week ago, there was a fire at 311, 3116 Pressbury Street when two separate mayday calls occurred while the scene, while on the scene of that fire. Can you walk us through the details of that incident and specifically what prompted the mayday call?
Okay.
And was that a vacant building or an occupied?
Captain Spencer's gonna, I think she has some information.
Excellent, thank you.
She's looking it up on her phone as we speak. Okay.
And to that end, I guess we can move on if there are other questions and when you guys get a chance.
I have two other questions.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. So, my first question actually has to do with the, the, excuse me, the vulnerability assessment tool to help fire departments with a systemic process to evaluate risks. I know you all are a little familiar with that tool. Do you all implement that in your departmental procedures? And this is from, if you're, if you're not familiar for the, for the general public, it's from the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation?
I'm not familiar with it. I'll have to look it up. I'm making the assumption that it's associated with a risk assessment?
Yes, it is a vulnerability risk assessment tool. It was done in coordination with the U.S. Firefighters Administration.
Yeah. I'll have to go back and review it. Like I stated earlier, our last risk assessment was done in 2013 and it does need to be updated and that's part of what we've had a conversation about as well.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one more question. And this may actually go into, this may actually go into the next hearing as well, but if you have any thoughts on, you know, the practice within the Fire Department of employees getting promoted to supervisory positions and wanting to stay in the battalions that they came from, is this something that's routinely done or it's something that you all take into consideration when replacing battalion chiefs in their respective new locations?
It comes down to a few things and whether or not the position is open, whether or not someone else has a bid in with more seniority that can go to that place and more than likely, once that, when the appointment is made, more often than not, if the position's still open, that's where you go because no one has selected to go there. And that's, for all practical purposes, that's all positions throughout the department. But, we run a process of people being able to request being assigned to certain areas. And generally speaking, we go with, with the request if the person has the seniority to do it, if, you know. The only time we deviate, and we do deviate from it, I do, I do. It, there's basis on a lot of circumstances, the experience of the individual, the experience of the other officers, and you want, you want to make sure you have a decent mix. Or, case in point, there may be somebody that, that is not, that needs a little bit more help than other ones.
Yes, yes, sir.
And I've had, I've literally moved people, even after they've been promoted and been there for a while.
So, so I would assume that the reason why I'm at, the reason why I'm asking that line of questioning is related to compliance and enforcement of departmental procedures. And I assume that that would be some sort of an issue as, you know, leadership, you know, new kid on the block, leadership comes into play. And so, I assume that you're taking that, all that, all of that into consideration when you're thinking through and thinking through promotions and also placements of these said promotions. these said promotions?
Well, the promotion part is, it depends on where the promotion's at. If it's battalion chief or lower, it's done by a rule of one, meaning that the next person who scored the highest on the list is the next person promoted, regardless. So they're the next person that's promoted, and they go to the open spot.
Okay, okay. I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have one more question. I think we're gonna wrap up. Do you have a quick question? Please quickly.
Thank you. Hello. Mr. Chief, the question I have
Yes, Council.
Is there, is there any way that the Xs could be like formatted like on Code Map so that you from the fire department and CHDC could kind of know when you guys are dispatching out to the firefighters if that vacant property, you know, if there's vacant property with a X on that home?
I'm sorry, sir. Could you repeat the beginning of that?
So on Code Map, when you pull up Code Map, it doesn't show like, is there a way where you guys can get with Code Map to put the Xs on Code Map so when you guys are dispatching out to the fire department, you and Housing would know, you know, exactly what you guys are getting into before you get there?
Yeah, sir. Generally, that's what we were doing initially when, on CAD. In fact, this is Director Hart, and she's over IT, and that's part of some of the things that her and Cashin were doing, that they were entering that information in the CAD. One of the things that they've done recently while entering that updated information is put it in a position that there's no doubt that you'll see exactly, if we have the proper address, that you will absolutely see, because it blinks and it's at the top of the screen in red. So now we have it in the CAD, but we still need to be in a position where, case in point, if someone doesn't, if we don't get the right address, they show up on the scene, just like one council people said, they'll get an improper address and they have to go somewhere else. Well, the CAD's not gonna tell you. So when you get there, you got to announce the address, and then there should be something there, if we're aware, that should mark that structure. And now that's my opinion in some kind of way. And I think, I think we're working through that. That's part of what I, the charge I gave Chief Stewart and Housing to work through. Chief Stewart and Assistant Chief, I mean, Deputy Chiefs and Housing as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna give the last question to Councilwoman McCray.
I had to answer for the Pressbury Street.
Oh, yes, please. Thank you.
So our safety officer responded to that call, and he actually sent a really detailed report about what happened. We did have one member who fell partially through the roof. That was the initial mayday. He was able to be pulled out. There were no injuries for that. The second mayday was called, was not in the original fire building. It was one of the exposures. So they were not actively inside of that original dwelling when the second mayday came out. Two different addresses. No injuries. They were checked out. There were no injuries. They were both able to be pulled out by the people that were in there with them.
Got it. Thank you. Councilwoman McCray?
Is there a culture within the Baltimore City Fire Department where companies race out of the station to beat each other to the front of the building for a fire?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you believe that a race to be first may create tunnel vision on the part of responding units where they are possibly more focused on being first than they are on being safe?
Sometimes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief Ford.
But also, I would like to add a component to it. That's part of the reason why we put the policy in place, that you can't enter the structure until someone else is there. So even if you go there and you dash, you have to stop and think, and you have to get more information. You can outrun everybody to it if you want to. You still can't actively, offensively fight. You can defensively do materials, but you cannot go in the structure.
Thank you, Chief Ford, for your additional comments.
Thank you both. The committee will now take public testimony. For those who are looking to testify, please step up to the podium, say your name clearly to the microphone, and we'll give you two minutes from there. Is there any public testimony? Seeing no public testimony, we will put this bill in recess. I want to thank the sponsor for bringing the bill to us, and appreciate the department for bearing all the good questions we had today. And I'm sure there's plenty of follow-up for which you'll get back to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The next bill that the committee will hear is Bill 22-0090R, informational hearing, Fire Department Office of the Fire Chief Annual Review, for the purpose of requesting that the chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department come before the city council to initiate the process of annually reviewing the duties of the office of the chief, requiring the review to include an evaluation of the department's efforts to meet performance goals, requesting that the chief, in consultation with the city council, establish goals and objectives for the upcoming year, and requesting that the chief identify service delivery gaps that need to be addressed. This bill is introduced on February 22nd, 2022, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Danny McCray. Councilwoman McCray, close yours.
Again, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, and my colleagues, of course, for hearing this bill and allowing me to share remarks. We, as elected officials, have the obligation to stay informed of the ongoing efforts, goals, and initiatives of all city agencies, including the Baltimore City Fire Department. To ensure continued progress and transparency, we must instill reasonable measures and maintain a standard by which the Baltimore City Fire Department's efforts are being evaluated. This resolution does call for the Baltimore City Fire Chief to come before the city council to commence the process of annually reviewing the duties of the office. This review will be comprehensive in nature, and not only evaluating the department's service delivery performance and corresponding goals, but also assessing their short and long-term goals and plans as well as objectives. These conveniences will be an integral step towards increasing collaboration and efficiency amongst our legislative bodies and impacted agencies. I want to thank everyone for your time and your continued support.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The committee will now hear from agency representatives, starting first with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Elena DePita from the Law Department. The Law Department reviewed City Council Bill 90R, and we've had the same issue with some, with similar bills, where the scope of the city council's authority under Article 3, Section 9 of the Charter, which allows them to call before the heads of departments, is limited to discussion of matters relating to the department itself, but not matters relating to the personnel issues of the department head. In fact, that would be a violation of the Maryland Public Information Act, which requires personnel records to be kept confidential. And even in, even in this context, where you're just providing oral communications, the MPIA still would prohibit the disclosure of that type of information. So I guess we can partially approve it in that we, you can call department heads before you, but you have to limit what you discuss or ask of them.
For clarity, can you explain what those limitations are and what we can or should and should not discuss with regards to performance?
So anything that might be, anything about the chief's performance in particular of his job, whether he succeeded or didn't succeed, or did something well or not well, those would be considered personnel matters. So if it's directly related to his performance, then it would be a personnel matter, as opposed to, you know, explaining how you run your department in different aspects of its operations.
Sure. Councilwoman Castella, I look like you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so I understand the Law Department's position here. So anything related to whether or not the head of an agency is successful is considered a personnel matter?
Yes. Anything that is related to evaluating their performance as the chief or head of the department would be considered a personnel matter.
Okay. So could you give me a hypothetical example of something that, in this instance, the head of this agency is the fire department, the head is Chief Ford, can you give me a hypothetical example of some, like, Chief Ford, can you give me an example of something that you're responsible for? It doesn't matter what it is. You and your, your department's responsible for certain things. Give me an example of something.
Emergency medical services, ambulance response.
Okay, ambulance responses. So ultimately, it is Chief Ford that is responsible for the success of the EMS operation in the city of Baltimore, correct?
Perhaps, yeah. You know, that's a fine line. The MPIA might not go that far. I don't know. But I mean, I'm not making this up. The MPIA specifically says that a violation of structural curve, the contents of a record are disseminated publicly. The charter provision in this case requires the chief to specifically discuss the prior year's performance metrics and how he ranked there, you know, what establishment or his goals and objectives for the upcoming year, identifying municipal service and delivery gaps that need to be addressed. That would be something probably that would be outside the scope, but the other things would be inside of the scope of a personnel record.
Let me take a step back. I understand the Law Department's concerns with what the resolution is calling for, and I appreciate them. But your interpretation, as you explained it, I believe is so broad that it precludes the city council from exercising its oversight authority of the success and failures of city agencies. So
Well, I think what we could do, if you had concerns about that, is provide a, you know, a more concise list of topics that would
Every topic that is, every function of city government that is performed should be fair game for the city council to provide oversight of.
I'm just telling you what the We're on Public Information Act says, and there are potentially sanctions against individuals who disclose confidential information. So our report is really designed to protect
I'm not talking about confidential information. Yeah, but Elena, I'm not talking about confidential information.
Personnel records are considered confidential. So if we go over the line there
I'm not talking about the resolution.
Okay.
I want to be clear. Not talking about the resolution that's in front of us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the interpretation that you just provided, this committee suggests that we can't perform our oversight function based on the hypothetical example that I just provided about Chief Ford.
And my response to you is, we could help you narrow down what, under the act, would be considered a personnel record and what wouldn't.
I'm, I've already narrowed it down. Any function of city government, no, no, every, any function of city government should be under the oversight of the city council. What's not?
Well, I think, I think there are distinctions to be made between personnel records and other information about the, how the agency is doing generally. So I
Again, I'm not talking about personnel records. I'm saying
But the definition of personnel record would include some things that you are specifically enumerated in the resolution itself, like goals and how he was able to meet last year's performance matrix and things like that.
Let me, let me reset first. I've worked with you for years and have an incredible amount of respect for your legal acumen. Let me reiterate, none of, my concerns don't have to do with the resolution in front of us. My concerns are related to the, your interpretation of what the city council's authority is and its ability to exercise its oversight function. So I asked Chief Ford for a hypothetical, not a hypothetical, an example of a function that his department is responsible for carrying out, that ultimately he, as the head of that agency, should be held accountable for the success of that function, right? So just looking at the fire department, I don't see anyone disagreeing with me that if the EMS function of the city of Baltimore completely failed, it is ultimately Chief Ford that should be held accountable for that. Just as if the EMS function of Baltimore City is wildly successful, it is Chief Ford that should be rewarded for that. I don't mean like monetarily. I just mean, like, that means he did a good job. If it fails, that means he did a bad job. That applies to every single agency in
Well, then, I would say that that's not the interpretation that the MPIA would say would apply. However, if you want to interpret that way, then I guess you can't ask him any questions. But, and that certainly isn't the goal that we, that you want to reach. And it's not the Law Department's intention to say you can't ask him any questions. We're just trying to work within the state law regarding these things.
So what, well, based on your interpretation, what do we have oversight of?
I would say, in response to the example that the chief gave, that is not a matter of his performance matrix or establishing goals for his future performance and that sort of thing. That's a specific question about the operations of a department within the fire department or a function within the fire department. But I understand what you're saying.
No, I don't.
But I don't, yes, I do.
I, no, I, okay, all right.
You're saying that everything would fall under that category.
Can I intervene in here a little bit? Just as far as the way the bill is drafted, it's directed at the office of the chief, which of course includes the chief, but then all those that sort of reside underneath him. And thus, if we are evaluating the office of the chief, once again, that means the chief, but it specifically means the office. Therefore, where it's not so much a personal review, although, once again, it is, but
Well, I think there's a section in there that talks about establishing goals and
For the office of the chief.
Well, I guess that would be fine if you're only talking about the office of the chief, but that would not involve specific questions about the chief's meeting performance matrix from the past year, or how many days he took off that year, or things like that. And I believe we can narrow this down to satisfy
Mr. Chair, Elena, hold on. No one's talking about the number of days that anybody in city government took off last year.
I know, but I was just giving that as an example.
But that's, but it's not even germane to, all right, let me take a step back. Chief, EMS is a core function of fire department. I need you to give me an example of another function that the office of the chief is required to carry out, that is a special initiative, that wouldn't normally, for example, something you had to do during COVID, where you got a directive from the mayor, "Chief, the mayor wants you to do X, Y, and Z." Just give me an example of something.
We, we took over the storage and dissemination of COVID equipment.
Perfect.
And testing material, things like that.
All right. And that wouldn't have happened if there wasn't COVID and a special set of circumstances, and either Mayor Young or Mayor Scott told you, "Chief, I need you to store this stuff." Great. So that's a special initiative. Does this body have the ability to provide oversight of how successful the office of the chief was in carrying that out?
No, I don't believe that would be prohibited by what the Law Department is trying to say.
That's insane. What is, what is the point of
You're asking about the performance of, or how a specific function of the, of the fire department was performed during the past year or in a specific situation. I don't see that as asking specifically whether the chief performed his duty appropriately under those circumstances.
But where in, but where in this resolution does it have anything to do with that man individually, or whoever is in that man's current position? There's nothing in here.
Well, I interpreted office of the chief to cover the chief himself. If you phrase your questions in a way that does not implicate the chief specifically, I think we're going
We're gonna go about it this way. As we pose questions, if you feel that that question gets into that area, maybe we need to change the question in a way that is more directly
That's an opportunity, that's a possibility.
Facing the office and does not then put the council at risk. Can we, can we do that?
Sure. Mr. Chair, can I
Please.
Ask one more question? Chief, you are the head of the department. You also happen to be the head of the office of the chief, right? For example, you have a fire marshal's office, and there's a person who's the head of that office, but ultimately, you're the head of the department that that office exists within, and there's multiple sister offices throughout the department. How many people work in the office of the chief?
Probably around eight.
Eight. So what we're talking about is an evaluation of the performance of an organizational unit which exists, well, okay, I just want to make sure, because this resolution, again, in no place that I can find refers to an individual person. It refers to an organizational unit that exists within a municipal department.
As, as the attorneys for the city and for the city council, we felt we had we felt we had to mention it to avoid a situation where we might get into trouble. So we were really trying to just protect the City Council from running afoul of the MPIA. So I think what you're proposing is fine.
Thank you. So to be clear, I'm going to interpret this a little bit. Our questions are directed at the Office of the Chief, of course, for which the Fire Chief is the lead of that office. Please pose your questions in that way, such that they do not get to the Fire Chief's particular performance as the Fire Chief. This is directed at the Office of the Chief. Is that clear? And is that sufficient? Thank you. So we'll move forward, and we'll move on to the Fire Department and the Fire Department's report. Chief Ford.
I sent a PowerPoint. Is it?
Oh, sure. We'll pull that up. Thank you. All right, we were going to hear from Chief Ford with a presentation from the Fire Department. We seem to have got it all up, so we're welcome. You're welcome to begin.
I just entitle it with the first line, "In the spirit of transparency and oversight." And I outlined the four points that were brought up in the bill that wanted, wanted me to speak on, so I'm going to go through those. So yearly goals and initiatives that have been the office's focus since the chief was appointed. I couldn't break it down exactly into years, but I can, I can, I can break out some major, some major advancements we made or things we were successful in. We were the first Fire Department in Maryland to get ISO-1 rating. It's insurance service organization. It lowers the insurance rates of, of, specifically more or less business owners, not necessarily as much residents, but more so business owners. We were one of the first, we were the first organization in Maryland. We did that corporately, working through that with, with Public Works. We initiated the new version of the high school program, which was initiated actually in 2014. It ultimately grew to having four schools, which was Dunbar, Patterson, Vivian T., and Frederick Douglass. We successfully transitioned into a new schedule for suppression. In 2013, 964, 734, and the city agreed upon a new contract in order to save the city money. It increased the number of hours members worked, and it also reduced the number of staffing perceived for the organization. So what we did was we transitioned in 2014, we transitioned to a new schedule, and we also transitioned into downsizing the department at the same time. We went through a basically a reduction, a certain, in a certain way, a reduction of people, not necessarily hours worked. Initiated a community-driven interview and hiring process. Soon after I got here, we already had a list of, and it was an older list. So the first thing I did was I started visiting the community, and because we, we, we were in the process of actually reducing our staffing because of the contract, I had time enough to pull together enough community people to actually re-interview everybody that was on the list. So I re-interviewed everybody that was, that was on the list at that time with community people, and we reorganized the list. We have done that ever since. We've used community people ever since, and we've been able to increase their authority and power in hiring people. So literally, they are the gatekeepers as far as getting into the organization. Promoted and increased diversity within BCFD. I'll speak more about that as, as we move on. We accepted leadership of the 911 system. Late 2015, early 2016, at that time, MoIT, Mayor's Office of Information Technology, which is B-SIT now, was actually over 911. And there were challenges in, in 911. At that time, I met with the Director of MoIT, and he asked, "Could we take it over?" because he felt like it should be with an emergency organization. I met with my staff. After they got through going off on me, we took it over. Sorry, here's some people laughing behind me. We took it over. We were able to successfully transition them into the Fire Department. That's the reason why right now, they, they were Fire Department uniforms. The leadership in that, it actually falls in the chain of command of Chief Case, and we're very actively involved with them. And we were able to, after, after we got them, we were able to go through a process with DHR to evaluate the pay of those 911 operators, and we increased their pay. That was, that was a huge challenge. They had a valid challenge in fact. We've ushered in a next-gen ready 911 system in 911. BCFD safety team became certified safety managers. Spearheaded a public-private partnership to renovate 17 kitchens in the fire stations. We, now that we renovated 17 kitchens, we also built gyms in certain stations in the city. That was, that was part of the public-private partnership with Under Armour and 17 other agencies put in $20,000 apiece, and we went through and renovated 17 stations, their kitchens. It was a fantastic process. Also during that process, we were able to secure the ability for every member, and this is going to come up too later on, we're able to secure every member to have access to Under Armour's gym. That was part of us focusing on their physical needs, and you'll see that later on. Led the transition into a two-tiered EMS system. At the time of my arrival, we were, I was a paramedic. We were ALS, All ALS Transport Organization. We were being overwhelmed by the call volume at that time. A proposal was made to me to move to a two-tiered system. What a two-tiered system means is that we're not just transporting using advanced life support transport units. We start using basic life support transport units. So what we wound up doing is reducing the staff of the ALS members, and for every person that we reduced ALS, we were able to add two BLS positions. Consequently, we increased our, our transport capabilities by over 30%. Initiated a Livwell Employee Assistance and Work-Life Balance Program in partnership with BHS. We did not have an EAP. The EAP we had was, was only, could only be used under a very, very small circumstance. That very small circumstance was specifically workplace violence. That's it. Along with 734 and 964, we began the process of trying to figure out how we can initiate a robust EAP program, reached out to BHS, and it has been a fantastic venture for us. It's something we, we send information about consistently. We train people when they come in as recruits. We even talk to it and train officers about it, so they know it's there for the use. And every quarter, BHS comes to me and reports to me with the significant problems they see within my organization. And it's so, if necessary, we can figure out a way to add resources or change our training. I don't know who called them or anything like that. I just know certain circumstances. I know broad-based challenges. We started a partnership with University of Maryland Medical Center for a transitional health support system and minor definitive care now pilot program. What that means is the transitional health is that we'd send people into the homes and see what the needs are when people check out the hospital, so they don't have to go back, so we don't have to take them back to the hospital. The minor definitive care, we send out a response team, and we only did that in certain zip codes of West Baltimore in partnership, and it was a pilot test, in partnership with University of Maryland Medical Center. And if it's something that's minor, they would take care of it on the scene, and the person doesn't even need to go to the hospital. We developed an organization or a, a project called Camp Sparks, and it's, it's a fire service empowerment camp for girls ages 12 to 16. The goal is, is to encourage young ladies to look at the fire service as a possible career. But it's even more important than that, because one of the things, we, we, the people that run it are not completely women, but it's predominantly women throughout the ranks of the organization and throughout every idiom of the organization. And they have, these young ladies who come, and in one case, a young man who comes, they can see themselves in these people. So our goal is try to encourage these women to, these young women, or young ladies, to choose this career, or even talk to their friends and say that you can do it. I met these people, and it actually gives us an ability to robust, robustly try to grow that, that process. We have, we have that program actually coming up this summer. We have the date. Chief Shallow, what is the date? July 30th? July 30th and 31st. Historically, we've only done it once a year. I asked to do it twice. It takes a lot of work, and it's hard on the staff, but I, but we end up getting more applications than we have seats, because we, we, we put a ceiling on the seats because of the number of people that have to come and the number of people it takes to facilitate it. So what we decided to do is do it in the summer and possibly fall or spring. Renovated Old Truck 6 Fire Station on Hanover Street to be basically our first EMS station. It's ready to move in. We just, we have a couple of things that cross over to get it done. Running out of that, we're going to have two transport units and a supervisor. Implement a procedure to utilize AVL and mobile data terminals to dispatch the closest unit to all calls using GPS data. Around four or five years ago, we realized we had the capabilities to be able to auto-vehicle locate our units. And at that point, we made the decision to start sending the nearest units to improve our response time, to, to be more, be more progressive about trying to improve our time improving the care that we give. Created a more comprehensive home safety inspection program, quality of visits rather than the quantity. You heard Chief Taj talk about that earlier. What we wound up doing was, at one time, we were judged by how many smoke alarms that we installed, so much so, and they told me back in the old days, what they used was double-sided contact tape and a plunger, and they'd walk around and do that, and then they'd write down the number they did. We have not, we, we, we decided to refocus our ability, our, and that was before, Councilwoman, that was before I got here, and it was well before I got here, so it was, it was a long time ago. But what we decided to do from a community risk reduction standpoint was to focus on quality. When people allow you into their house, take the opportunity to talk about having a plan to get out this house if this smoke alarm does go off. Have, have, have a conversation about them decluttering certain areas so they can get out if something happens. Have a conversation with them about even EMS or COVID at that time. Have a conversation with them about, "You got anybody might be interested in the Fire Department?" And they're going out there with pamphlets, and also educating them with, on when to call 911 and when not to, 311 and 411. They have pamphlets for that.
Chief Ford?
Yes.
Just to be cognizant of time, we do have a hearing at the end of this.
Okay.
If we could try to conclude your presentation by 3:30. It's now 3:18. That would be appreciated. Is that possible?
I'll, I'll run.
Okay.
All right. We took over the COVID vaccination process. We installed gender-neutral bathrooms for public-facing restrooms. We implemented a comprehensive EMS inventory management system that we believe is going to save us a significant amount of money. They're like vending machines where people can, and it gives us the ability to track the information coming through. Accepted leadership responsibility of OEM as we entered COVID. Managed COVID-19 central distribution warehouse. Purchased specialized bariatric ambulances, and we, several other equipment, and we did that all through grants, mostly through grants rather. Piloted alternate destination plan, applied for ET-3. We were one of the few organizations in, in the country that was able to get the application of ET-3. ET-3 gives us the ability to possibly build Medicaid, Medicare, sorry.
Medicare and Medicaid.
Yeah, Medicare and Medicaid, other than taking them to the ER. Started a cancer reduction program. Part of it was in partnership, a major part of it was in partnership with 734, 964, where we started exchanging hoods and sending all the gear out to clean, to be cleaned and added washer and dryers. Put online training, so we won't have to move people out as much. They can do their training, some of their training in-house. Developed a anti-human trafficking program, and Lieutenant Lull, I gotta say that she's a superstar, and it's a fantastic program. On track to have the youngest fleet the Fire Department's had. We expect to have it by the end of next year, definitely, maybe before that. Opiate partnerships. Recorded the lowest, the two lowest fire deaths in the history of Baltimore City Fire Department. Seven and 11 between 2019, I mean, between 2020 and '21 respectfully. Hired an equity program coordinator, and she developed an equity blueprint, that's Kim Washington. Developed LGBTQ organizations, developed a Phoenix chapter of women in the fire service. So we have our own women's organization, our own LGBTQ organization, and developed a Fire EMS Committee. Their goal was to troubleshoot a lot of our issues. There's, there's some of the people are very involved in our organization, and a lot of problems we give to them, I give to them. They're kind of my feedback organization. Incident Safety Officer and Fire Officer Training Programs. We instituted a six-day program based on a grant that Chief Shallow got for $1.02 million. Initiated the process. We are, this year, we received an additional $40 million in EMS that we have never gotten before EMS. Led the charge on trying to figure out how we can do that and worked with DigitCheck, which is our billing agency, to make sure we had the opportunity to do it. Purchased new apparatuses. I know that was a concern about, from many. Bought 48 over the last, since 2015 fiscal year, 48 transport units, 25 fire engines, 11 fire trucks, three fire squads, two air flex units, one rescue unit. One rescue unit that has been refurbished, an old rescue unit that we had refurbished, and one hazmat unit. The next question was the status of the report of, that came out on Lieutenant Bethia. There were many changes that we made in results of Lieutenant Bethia's passing, and I'm just going to highlight them based in, in, in MOPs. Looks like it's cutting off part of it. Can you, yeah, can you realign that for me? Oh. Okay, thank you. All those, all those components address the issues of accountability that came out of our reports. We made modifications of all those, and many of those, we've made modifications since then as well on accountability. Those, maintaining crew integrity, we made modifications of personal accountability. Command transition, we made changes to those policies referring to that. Removal of SCBA, when you can do it, who can say you can do it. Safety officers, as far as who's in charge, who's on the scene, how their qualifications are going to be at, we've improved those. The command transition, that was one of the concerns they have, so we put policies in place, and initially, we released a bulletin right away to try to adjust to it as soon as possible. As far as notation of hazardous and unsafe building conditions, that was also part of, part of the component when we started actually adding more information into the CAD. Communications, one of the challenges that they had is that we didn't know we had one more unit on the scene. So the last unit that's on the scene has to say the last unit on the scene. If you appear to still be on the CAD, nobody's going to put you in service. I've been on the CAD at 4 o'clock in the morning. After I left, I called. 2 o'clock in the morning, they called me on my phone and said, "Where are you?" An updating implementation of the goals in 2016, 21, 21 strategic plan. When, when we put together that, did I jump past? Okay. When we put together that, that plan, some of, even, even CPSE, the organization that moderated, said, "Those are some very, very aggressive plans." They said, "Chief, we don't know how you're going to do it." One of the things I knew right then, because we were in financial issues, we were running overtime, and we were in significant financial issues, and that's almost right when we, right after that is when I was put in a position where two units were put on the table to be disbanded. So I knew I couldn't put up the staffing to do all this. So what we did is we put groups together to, to focus on the issues in long, in broad perspective. broad perspectives, and this is what we were able to do. As far as MIHCP, which was the first issue that they raised, of course, we started the partnership with University of Maryland to, to move forward with that. Uh, we moved forward with the transition of, uh, health support, transitional health support that we talked about, minor definitive care, and we moved forward with alternate destin, alternative destination, moved forward to ET3. And as of, as of late, we have a, a, um, a phased-in plan to expand mobile integrated health community paramedic, including population health. The future is, like I said, um, we're going to expand our operational hours and geographical coverage, we're going to consider augmenting, uh, THS and look at clinical referrals. One of the big things we're really looking at is telemedicine. Uh, the next one is to develop a and maintain a BCFD workforce that is physically and psychologically capable of providing services in a safe environment. That's when we went ahead and did our partnership with BHS, and I had an opportunity to have several people come to me and tell me it's working very effectively. One individual in particular called about, he, he had, he had to take in his mother who was ailing, and they helped him find, uh, adult daycare so he could leave and come to work. He said they were fantastic. The only, the only challenge is she did pass. Um, but the partnership with BHS is awesome. We have peer support teams that, that currently function in our organization that we support. We have a CI, we have, uh, CISM teams, CISM teams. During the passing of our firefighters on January 24th, we were actually, um, stood up greatly from the, from the National IFF, where they sent in several of their members and several of their trained people to help our people make it through those circumstances.
Can, can you explain what a CISM team is?
Critical Incident Stress Management Team. Those are the people we send out, and we send them out all the time, in fact. If, if you see where a child has been hurt seriously, uh, it's not unusual for us to send a team out. If members get hurt seriously, we'll send a team out to that area. So we have certain protocols, or even as we discussed, any, any, any company officer, chief officer could go through the process of initiating. It's not a problem because it's there to help members. Develop a comprehensive outreach program. We have, we have a program, we have several programs, I, I gotta be honest, which COVID kind of set us back some. We were doing hands-only CPR, we were going out just like, um, Councilman Burnett, we've come out to several events of yours. We come out to those events, we go to schools. We have very active programs and very comprehensive programs, but we're in the process of even expanding that. Um, I'm putting everything under a, under like a, a, a media, public outreach, uh, communications organization that looks at internal and external communications. We, um, and I'm probably going to get ahead of myself, but, but even, even during COVID, one of the things we wanted to do is improve communications to our members. So our members are supposed to read emails, that's part of what they're supposed to do. Um, but they don't always, they don't always read the information. So what we started doing, especially during COVID, because so much information was coming out consistently, I set up something called the Chief's Corner, where people can see and send questions in, and, and I will answer those questions either in writing, but at, back then, I was doing mostly videos. In fact, if you, and we put it in a way that you can see it at home. So if you go to YouTube right now, type in, you know, Baltimore City Fire Department, this, several videos will show up of things that we were talking about specifically during COVID, but I'm starting them back up, uh, during, or COVID's still going on, but during the high marks of COVID, uh, we're, we're starting it back up.
And Chief Ford.
Yeah.
We're nearing the half hour, I just, if we could move a little quickly so we can get to questions, that'd be helpful, thank you.
All right. So, um, we worked continuously improve, um, our safety offices and continuously improve our, um, our workforce planning by, by evaluating. We do a robust and aggressive recruitment, so we're still working through that. Improve our workforce, that's part of the reason why we have training, all the training, including the 1.02 million dollars that, uh, Chief Shallow came up with. The internal dissemination of information is what I was talking about earlier. Develop and maintain contemporary, uh, policies and procedures. That has been a challenge for us because we had a committee stood up and that committee has waned because it's a whole lot of work. Under, um, the last component that's not on there, develop and maintain information technology system that will improve efficiency. We have added several things to our organization, CAD, of course, mobile comm, uh, fire records, tele-staff, of course, is there, mark alert, active 911. We, we are aggressively going after that. Goals, this is the last one, I believe. Goals and initiative. We're going to begin a phased-in, uh, evolution of, of expansion of EMS, MIHCP, where, where it goes beyond geographical bounds. Um, we're going to continue and expand a culture of safety throughout the organization. We're going to update our fleet, as I said, I expect it to be the youngest fleet. Begin the process of building new and renovating existing fire stations. Attempt to hire between 120 and 160 firefighter EMTs and paramedics. Create a developmental program for leaders and aspiring leadership in, in the department. Develop a partnership with COP and State and expand, uh, the relationship with BCCC. We've been talking to COP and State about specifically public safety certifications and public safety degrees. And we've outlined them, we've, we've sent the degrees to them and how they can accomplish it based upon certifications that police, fire, EMS, OEM, communications, and public works, because that's considered a public safety. So we, we've already outlined that and sent it to them, we, we're excited about the possibility, we're going to see how that plays out. Continue to expand operations for city residents to become part of, um, BCFD. Create an internal affairs division. We've, we've tried to build an internal affairs division by asking for positions. We have not been able to get it because it's not necessarily high on our list, at the same time, we're talking about disbanding units. So what we're doing is reassigning three chiefs in order, chief officers in order to stand this up. Create a combined, and, uh, and that's why I was talking about the media, public relations, community outreach and, and, um, public education division. Replace two, uh, mobile classrooms out of training facility. If we do not do that, we will not be able to put on all these classes I'm talking about. We have, we've got about 50 people out there right now. I, they're, they're bursting at the seams and, and we, we've got two classrooms that have, that have to be, uh, replaced because no one can work in them because it's unsafe. Youth apprenticeship program, um, both internally and, and dealing with, uh, Maryland Apprentice and training. I think we already have 20 applications for that? 10. We already have 10 applications for that program. And any questions?
Thank you, Chief Ford. Um, appreciate the, the very quick walkthrough of everything. And what we're going to do is we're going to open up the, to questions, and I'm going to start with two to just sort of set the table. Can you, uh, give us a brief overview of your career, where you started and how you, how you got to Baltimore?
I started off as a band director in Birmingham City Schools. I accepted the, uh, position in Bessemer Fire Department. I didn't think I'd, I, I went in, a lot of people know I have a prosthesis, I've never been able to do anything physical like that, like the Marines, I wanted to be a Marine. But the fire, I was able to get in the fire department because I did well with the physical agility test. Worked my way up the ranks in Bessemer, got degrees, got my paramedic, interviewed for deputy chief of Fulton County, accepted the position, went from Fulton County, became the fire chief in Lincoln, Nebraska. From Lincoln, Nebraska, I became the city manager in the city of Shambly. I worked there for two years and, and left there, um, as, as directed by the city council and, um, interviewed thereafter and accepted the job with Baltimore City. I'm a military, Brad, I was born in Dover, Delaware, so I bumped around some.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes.
And when you came on as fire chief, you, you called yourself a change agent, change agent in your original press conference, and, um, do you believe that during your time here, the office has had an impact on positively shifting the culture of the department? Uh, and if so, can you identify some of the initiatives, uh, that the office has put in place to accomplish that, that change that you've set out to?
Some of, some of the shifts and, and, um, the conversation I received right off from, um, the mayor at that time was she wanted to encourage diversity in the organization, so I've aggressively gone after that. I've tried to open the door as wide as we can to get people inside and far, in fact, making changes to the, to, excuse me, the physical agility test, making changes to the written exam, making complete changes to the interviews and through the system and, and remove certain barriers that I saw would, would stop people of moving up throughout the organization. Um, part of the fire EMS committee that I put together was to help me figure out a way to do some of those things, and some of them are very difficult.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to start on this side, uh, starting first with the sponsor of the bill. Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Each calendar or fiscal year, city agencies set performance metrics for administrative and operational goals that they look to achieve during that time period. For calendar year 2021, what were the performance metrics that the office of the chief put in place for the agencies and did the agency meet the goals, meet those goals?
Ma'am, I don't know what they are, right off the top of my head, I'd have to look at, um, that information.
Can you furnish the performance metrics that the office of the chief put in place for 2021 to the committee and if those goals were met?
Respectfully, I can't tell you what they are. Uh, off the top of my head, I'd have to read them and I'd have to analyze what I, what we, what we responded to and how our goals played out. Uh, you have to understand that as you run.
So for the sake of time, I'm asking you, can you furnish them to the committee? I'm not asking, can you provide them right now?
Oh, I can, yes ma'am.
Because you said you don't know.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I'm going to skip the one for calendar year 2022 because I'm going to, I don't want to make the assumption that you may not have them available, so I'm going to ask the same question for 2022. Do you have that information available? Or would you like to furnish that at a later date?
I will furnish that at a later date.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and briefly move on to some items that I'm pretty sure that you or someone else on the staff can speak about, um, because you spoke about this one within your presentation.
Yes.
The Mobile Integrated Health Pilot Program that the fire department participated and concluded sometime last year. Can you give us an expanded recap of some of the takeaways that the office of the chiefs may have? And what are the next steps? Um, again, you briefly spoke about it during the presentation, but what are the next steps in reference to expanding the program citywide?
Yeah. They, it hasn't concluded yet. Chief, I mean, Chief Matts, it hasn't concluded yet, we did have a meeting with University of Maryland this week and, and it is, from, from their own statement, it's a possible sunsetting soon. But go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. For the record, my name is James Matts, I'm the deputy chief EMS. Um, in 2018, we did enter into that public-private partnership with University of Maryland to provide a mobile integrated healthcare program, and it strictly was targeted at West Baltimore. That's one of the downfalls of the program, it never went citywide. Um, but the two programs, one was a transitional program, which is a transition from hospital to home. Um, it honestly, it primarily helped the hospital with readmission penalties, but we, it was gradually transitioned a patient to home so they could self-sufficient. We also at that time did several, uh, tried to address some of the, um, uh, social determinants of health type things, you know, we did environmental scans, you know, pharmacy reconciliations, tried to assist people to become, uh, independent. Uh, and it had some significant success, actually, the rest of the state of Maryland looks to us as to where we're heading and, and sustaining up other programs. They actually stood up a, um, a statewide mobile integrated healthcare, um, committee that actually answers to the state EMS advisory council. Um, they actually put me in charge of that, and they're looking at different models throughout the state. The Minor Definitive Care Now is, it's a terrible name, it's really more like treat in place. A doc or a nurse practitioner goes out with a, a community paramedic, they go to low acuity call, and if they can, they'll treat that call there free of charge. The nice thing about ET3 is they're actually paying for that now. So the federal and the state government not only is, you know, offering a grant, but they're actually offering to sustain that, and that's what some of those things like Councilwoman was talking about earlier. Where are we going from here? Like Chief Ford said, we just had a meeting with University of Maryland, I think it was Monday, Chief, where the program expired in the fall. University of Maryland, the center, has been funding it, and it's going to be funded through the end of July 31st, and then they're looking for additional funding. What's nice is what the chief, uh, talked about earlier, we were able to leverage some additional funds this year through the emergency service provider program, where basically we bill the federal government for their share of what we leave on the table. Through the new budget, they're allowing us to expand some of those programs, and some of the initiatives that we're looking to do is to actually expand the, the population health program. Population health is the umbrella. MIH falls under there, which is mobile integrated healthcare. Alternative destination falls under there. Nursing and 911 center falls under there, and what we're trying to do is bring it all into one umbrella, um, which includes some additional population health lieutenants, community paramedics, as well as community health workers, which are like the social work arm of that. Some of the things that they're going to be doing is going on the street every day, not just in West Baltimore, but throughout the city of Baltimore. And they're going to target high utilizers, vulnerable adults, telemedicine. We already have the hardware in place with 300 iPads to be able to do telemed. We're actually looking at the, the software at this point. Uh, we could address some of the opiate concerns we have. Vaccination to continue to do that, to do some clinician referral, where a low acuity call can be directed to that unit to save a 911 unit for a high, a high acuity or a transport to the hospital. We're also going to drive the alternate destination. We're opening up some additional alternate destinations with not only University of Maryland's program, but with total healthcare. Life Bridge came to the table, they want us to look at express care right outside of Sinai Hospital, so we're having some additional alternate destinations, we're in some active discussions with that. Uh, we also have the health department at the table because population health is, health department-driven. Uh, and then we're going to continue with treat in place and some additional funding through ET3. I'm trying to speak fast.
So our goal is to expand as much as possible, but we have to do it through partnerships. Um, the challenge we had with just University of Maryland Medical Center is, it, it certainly served them, but it didn't serve the greater Baltimore community, but it did allow us to learn, and we have. And so to that extent, as, as we ask for everybody, and for lack of a better word, grab in, grab into the table when I start, when we start, as we've been working through hospitals, because we're meeting with them. We're trying to get everybody to participate and, and grab in and, and help us move things forward.
Thank you. A recurring item that came up in a 2016, um, strategic plan and the 2021 facets report was work schedules for fire and EMS personnel. Can you discuss with the committee what concerns there are around the scheduling in the fire department and if they were addressed during the most recent labor negotiation process?
In, in, in broad strokes, and I'm, I'm sure the, um, we have the union presidents here as well, maybe they can allude to what, what they're, it, the facets report and, and the strategic plan was a discussion amongst members, and it's a concern of members. We had just switched to the new shift schedule, so a lot of people struggled with it. 24-hour schedule is common in a lot of places, maybe not so much in the Northeast, but it's common in a lot of places, so it, it took some adjusting to go from 10s, 10s, 14s, 14s, 14, yeah. So it took some adjusting to do that. So it comes up as, as a conversation, but that's an issue that can only be resolved through negotiations. It has to be something that's a consideration of, of, of labor and management during that process.
Has the fire department had any conversations about moving EMS to a 24-hour shift or put in fire and EMS both on a 24-hour, on 48-hour off-shift schedule?
Yeah. That's part of what I put the fire EMS committee together for. I, I had a cross-section of people from fire and EMS administration, uh, not high-level people, they didn't move beyond battalion chief, all of them were operational. They were male, females, different backgrounds, racial and sexual. And that was part of what the discussion was and, and, and their perspective in general was almost the same perspective as, uh, many before them, that the, the volume of calls that EMS gets right now, it would be, it wouldn't be sustainable for people to be on it and run 24 hours in the kind of schedule we have and run the volume of calls. So they, their, their perspective to me was that's not the wisest idea. So they had other perspectives, but that, that one they, they had challenges with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to allow the other committee members, the actual committee members.
Appreciate it, thank you. Any questions? Councilman Ramos, and then we'll come to this side.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and Chief Ford, just to follow up on our conversation at the hearing a couple of weeks ago, um, I appreciate the information that your office gave about how many Spanish speakers, Latinos were actually 911 operators? The answer is one.
Yes, ma'am.
So what is the department doing to change that? Because I know that you use Language Line, but Language Line takes a minute to connect, and so that, you know, a minute is a life, as you know. So can you tell us what the strategies are to, uh, obviously recruit more Latinos for the, um, department, but also, you know, Spanish speaker Latinos in for the 911?
Yeah. Um, we, we started a partnership with, um, We started a partnership with, I can't think of Catalina's last name, a while ago, to help us understand what the demographics of the entire city are, is. And it's not just, you know, one language where we had to really focus on a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different languages spoken in the city. So our goal was to try to, as far as we can, diversify interest in 911 and the fire service and EMS services as much as we can. So we send recruiters out. In fact, those individuals, if you look at our recruitment committee, there are people of different backgrounds, different colors, speak different languages. And we send them out in the community to try to encourage people. I've since moved, and I think it was in early February, I moved a young lady who came through our high school program, who is first-generation Latino in the United States. And I moved her into our public information, our community outreach program. So I'm trying to put the right things in place to get it out there. We're doing everything we can. We did commercials that were, I mean, not, but YouTube commercials that were multilanguages in recruiting efforts. So we're reaching out.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think that's a, the recruitment issue is something that we've talked about in this committee as well, in terms of trying to get diverse classes as well. And then another question related to the 911. Recently, there's been some reports about people calling 911 and getting a machine, an answering service.
Yes.
And then, you know, then later on connecting to somebody.
Yep.
That seems to be, again, when you're in an emergency, you want to talk to a person. So what's happening there? If you could tell us?
That particular issue, I already have Director Reddick pulling information. Actually, I saw an email on my phone a few minutes ago, so I'm probably going to have the answer as soon as I sit down and evaluate and call her and answer some questions. But in high call volume times, let's say we have a major wreck on the interstate, or we have shootings almost simultaneously in the city, you're going to get inundated with 911 calls, and it rolls over to, it goes to an answering machine that tells you, do not hang up. And if you do, it calls you back, but it puts you back in queue where you were. I mean, puts you back in queue wherever that call came in at. It would be difficult to staff up enough during those peak times in order to maintain that. And we, I'll readily admit, we should add some staffing, but I don't know if we could meet the peak time where we'll never hear a taping. We'll never hear that recording. That's common best practices throughout the country, and it's something that happens throughout the country. But that specific incident, there's certain things that individuals said during the interview that had me concerned, and I'm checking into it.
Is the recording in different languages as well?
I don't think so. I think it's just, I think it's just English. I'll double check. I will double check. I think it's just English.
I mean, not only do we not want to hear that recording, we want to have a person there, and I understand the peak hours issue.
Yep.
But recognizing that our city is becoming more diverse, we absolutely have to make adjustments, and we're working on the 311 as well in the same way.
Yes, ma'am.
So I look forward to, you know, continuing to track this issue in terms of making sure that people who are speaking different languages can still coordinate and talk with somebody on 911. Thanks.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Costello, any questions at the moment? We'll go over to this side. Any questions on this side?
Following up on the 911 response time, do you all have data how often the recording is played versus a live person answering the call?
I will, I will check into that information, but one of the things I'm able to do, that they're able to give me, I know because I asked, the average wait time for people under certain, we can choose a certain time period, and I can pull that information. I know I can get that.
Thank you for that. And then from that information, are you all thinking through changes through your staffing model, plan to kind of like account for those peak hours that the recordings going more than a live person?
We already have staffing according to what we believe to be peak times.
Okay.
There are a few challenges with that. We're still going through a hiring process, I think. How many individuals?
If you could speak up or speak into a-
Yes, Lisa Wood, just, who is our Director of Human Resources, just stated that we just hired nine. I think we have five or six more coming soon after that. So we do have vacancies that we have to fill. Yes, that's part of the challenge. But it would be hard to, other than us analyze the times we normally see things, but those things that may happen outside that window, like where we had the snowstorm and we had those trucks back, you know, hit each other on the interstate, we got thousands of calls off of that because everybody saw and everybody called 911. And there's no way you could, you could keep up with that.
Okay. And then, more importantly, one of the issues that I know a few of my colleagues have raised about just EMS response times, as we move forward post-COVID, are you all, or can you speak to how you all are thinking through, one, increasing, I know recruitment is hard, but are you all thinking through other aspects or other alternatives that can be used in place of like increased recruitment?
That's, that's part of what the mobile integrated health, community paramedicine, and that's part of what that plan is. We are increasing the number of ambulances we're bringing onboard through some of that money as well, so we have more response units. But we have EMS people that respond, right? Everybody is EMS-trained in the Fire Department. So when you see a big red truck come up, you know, you get, there's EMS system. The challenge is, is transport. So if I get a little ahead of myself, you can pull me down, Chief Matts, the serious conversation that's going on now is us really looking at the protocols that we use.
Yes, and I was going to say, even in connection to the hospitals, have you all like filed any MTA violations or anything that kind of substantiates some of the issues that you all are seeing with regard to response time to the hospital?
Yes, ma'am. We've been in, we actually have monthly meetings with all the area hospitals. When we had our big surge back in January, it got pretty rough. It was a big turnaround time for hospitals to explain how bad that they were actually hindering our ability to get out of the hospitals and go to the next call. So we are working on that actively. They, I think I've kindly driven with a hammer and let them know that it's their responsibility, not ours. But the problem is there's no magic bullet. We need to put additional units, take people to other places, up to and including using Uber or Lyft if it's appropriate. And that's what we're trying to do, as well as do a nurse in the 911 center. That's one of the other things they're funding. Where they can farm off low acuity call determinants and then farm them out.
Yes.
You know, that only by itself will do 10 or 15,000.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But all those little bits will add up. And we're trying to take the pressure off the system.
Yeah, it only accounts for, to my knowledge, it only accounts for a certain amount. And so my question to you is, are we looking at other alternatives, like, you know, different patient ambulatory surgical centers that we can use to kind of divert some of those calls that should be going to the hospital to the ambulatory surgical centers?
So in the grand master scheme of things, it's urgent care centers, it's, you know, FQHCs? You know, part of the plan with that nurse in the 911 center is all the area hospitals have to agree to give X number of appointments per day to those, to those locations. So the idea is to have somebody back there that said, okay, this is appropriate for an appointment. Hey, we'll send Uber or Lyft to you and we'll get you taken over to an appointment. So that's, that's the great plan. It's just we got to get there in baby steps, but that's where we're heading.
Yeah, and I encourage you, you know, when we have the conversation about the additional funds from CMS, Medicare, and Medicaid, there are allotted, there are allotted line items related to transportation that can be used for that particular issue. So look forward to talking with you more about it, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief?
Yes, sir.
So first, I just wanted to, I didn't want to forget to give a shout out to Lieutenant Law and her work on the human trafficking training program. As some of you are, maybe you know, I'm the co-chair of the Human Trafficking Collaborative in Baltimore City, and her and the agency overall have been great partners in expanding training and operations around human trafficking awareness, identifying victims. And we've met with a few of our hospital partners who've noted that they've seen an increase in referrals from the Fire Department, result, like, starting from that training onward. So I just wanted to lift that up and thank you for your leadership on that and for her being just a staunch advocate in this work.
She has a passion for it.
It's clear. It's clear. So the, but yeah, just wanted to lift that up. We've, we talked about this before, but I did also want to come back to it because you mentioned in your presentation a emphasis on diversification of the department along race and gender. And so if, an opportunity to speak broadly about the continued efforts being made as there are still a lot of concerns that I have personally about the number of African-Americans, the number of females that are captains in the Fire Department, the number of Battalion Chiefs and where they're assigned. And I know we've had extensive conversations about this, so just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to the continued efforts in that, in that front.
What, one of the, one of the previous bills that was passed has us evaluating that. So I do know that facets has met with union leadership, snuck out. They've met with union leadership. They met with all of our interest groups, LBTQ, I mean, LBTQ group, the Vulcan Blazers. They met with women in the fire service. So we're working, and they have questions to ask about all those things, so we're working through those now.
Okay. And I guess when would be an appropriate time for us to request follow-up on the outcome of those interviews?
When they finish their report. I imagine they'll want to put it together as-
Essentially, have they been given a deadline?
I'm sorry, repeat it.
Have they been given a deadline to complete their report?
The deadlines associated with the ordinance, yeah. And I don't want to code it, but for some reason, I'm thinking 120 days. Is that right? Okay. Yeah, it's associated with the ordinance.
Okay, sorry. I know I put a bunch of them out there, so. Okay. And then the other, in this maybe, in that same assessment, some of the reasons that we're still seeing disproportionate number of women not passing the physical ability test implemented, we still continue to see that decline over the last 10 years or so.
Councilman, I got to be honest with you, I felt very good about what we did this past time. In fact, I felt, I felt exceptional about it. I think that the process we put forth, put us in a position and- I don't know if you remember the numbers. You can come up here for a second, Chief.
So we tried something new this year with this PAT test. We put everybody through, and those people who passed, they went through to the next stage. Those people who failed were mentored. They came back for a month. They trained. We had personnel work out with them, go over the course as well, and it increased the female success rate by 75%. So it was a pretty significant number.
But I don't want to marginalize the work because exactly what my folks told me would happen, happened. We did have people, we had both young ladies and men, but mostly young ladies, to be frank, that after they went through that first time, they said, not for me. And even though we sent people to talk to them, we called them, they still did not come back. But to be fair, we shouldn't do that anyway. You don't want to bring somebody back in an environment that they've made up their mind that this is not what they want to do, because we put them in unsafe circumstances and other people as well possibly. But the process that they set up, I think, I think did exactly what they said would do. Now, what we have to do is we've got to have a longer running off time in order to do the recruitment and be able to streamline the process. We had plans, but we ran into bumps last time. I think the numbers would have been greater, much greater. But I think we're doing well. I think this recruit class is around 30% female? 25? About 25% female. It's half minority and female. So we're heading in the right direction. And we've had a majority, minority class before. So I'm, since I've been here a couple of times. So we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you. I have more, but I'll keep going.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
And your team. So it was reported today that in 2021, this is nationwide overdose deaths increased by 15% over the last year. I am quite sure that is, that trend is happening here in Baltimore as well, largely to do with fentanyl and at least nationwide, methamphetamine, which I think is maybe less of an issue here, but still, we are seeing an enormous amount of overdose deaths. I'm curious, given that we know drug overdoses have increased pretty substantially during the pandemic, how EMS has adjusted? What new protocols you've put in place? Because I know that is a large percent of the calls that you all get.
Yep. Chief Matts? We actually meet every week with the executive team, and we specifically talk about EMS numbers. Go ahead, Chief Matts.
Hi, good afternoon. With regard to opiates, we actually are very active with the Health Department. We're a large part of the opioid intervention team for the city of Baltimore. But specifically, what do we do to outreach to that? Is we actually started a leave behind program. We're actually the leading jurisdiction in the state of Maryland that leaves behind Narcan kits. And we can leave up to three kits, which is two doses each of denaloxone that they, they're trained to use, which is to spray up the nose. And in follow-up and in hindsight, we actually are filing up on the reports, and we're having people that are receiving so much of it. It's a lot easier to treat somebody withdrawing than it is just not breathing. So we're actually having the opposite effect where people are getting a little bit too much. But to that end, when we had the city budget hearing last year, Councilman Costello asked for us to publicize the leave behind and the number of opiates, the number of times we administer Narcan, and it's publicly available on the open Baltimore website. So we're doing that going forward. We're trying to work with health to do peer support and, you know, buprenorphine administrations. And we're also in talks, that community paramedic model is any model you make, as long as you put a community paramedic. There's a lot of discussion about potentially putting a peer outreach or some kind of a, you know, suboxone or a buprenorphine administration if it allows and there's availability of personnel. So we're working closely with health with that.
Gotcha. Great to hear about the Narcan. Do you all, do, in addition to that, do you all do anything to help folks get into treatment, if at all possible? Because I know that what we see a lot is folks OD. We revive them through Narcan. Your folks go out, do a good job, but then it's, they're still caught in the cycle of addiction. So is there sort of a connection and a next step?
There's two points of access here. The key to the thing is the person wants, has to want help, and there's two routes. We can either head them towards a stabilization center, which is also very good. They also have the peer support or peer outreach from the Health Department. There's actually a way they make a notation on their report. It flags the report, it gets seen the next day. They also call our medical duty officer. Health Department's never going to be able to respond with their speed out to a location. So we're trying to pay, have a way to get ahold of this person at this location. They're not always successful. That's why we're trying to look at a little bit different model with that outreach and population health, community, paramedic model to be able to get them out a little bit quicker, because they can take a little longer on scene. Historically, overdoses are like 15-minute calls are quick. So we're trying to get better at it.
Okay. Would love to see that loop tightened up. Know that, you know, in this city, we lose almost three times as many folks to overdose deaths as we do to homicides. So whatever we can do to prevent death from occurring, we know we're ground zero for the opioid crisis here in Baltimore. And so the work with Health Department, peer navigators, all of that is incredibly important, and would love to see that improved. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I've got two questions. First, can you remind me how many fire fatalities we had in 2021?
2021?
Yes.
We had 11.
And how many did we have in 2020?
Seven.
Seven. So do we know what fire suppression strategies or otherwise may have changed that could have resulted in that, that increase?
I tend to believe that it's not a, and I said this when I was asked during this, during the first one, it's not a flash of lightning that happens. It's a process where our folks are going out in the field, going out in the community. And when we switched, I really believe part of it is when we switched to just numbering smoke alarms, to really sit down and talk into the community. And I mean, the last statement I say is go make friends, because I go out there when they go out. I think that makes a big difference. I really do. So I'm very optimistic that we'll, you know, that we'll see as close to numbers like that as possible. I know, I know, and I got Derek Reddick, Chief Reddick, looking at me saying, man, you just jinxed everything, but. you just jinxed everything." But I'm hoping that, you know, our folks are putting the time out, time in now, so they don't have to deal with people, you know, not getting out of the house later, because we're still having a large number of fires, a significant number of fires. So...
And how many fire fatalities have we had this year thus far?
Yeah, four.
Four. Okay. My other question is with regard to the smoke alarm program. So do we keep data on the smoke alarm program to measure how effective it is in reducing civilian-related fatalities?
We know where we have working smoke alarms at and not having them when we go in fire, so I can try to pull that information.
And over the, and maybe you may not have this on hand, but over the last 16 months, how many of those locations had fire alarms?
I don't know. I have to get you that information, but it's in the report.
It should be in the NIFRS report.
Yeah, yeah. So it's in the NIFRS report. We'll look for the information. Where we focus that more often is when we have fatalities and injuries.
Sure. I think that's really important to know going forward, just in understanding the effectiveness of the program and whether it's more people being tapped for smoke alarms or having that deeper relationship to understand how that philosophy has changed or whether it is or is not working. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you. I'll move on. Questions on this side?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any additional questions. Just to close out, I just want to thank Chief Ford and his team for the thoughtful dialogue and also the transparency as well, and just to say that I do look forward to future conversations.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions? No questions? Any questions on this side? No questions? Excellent. We will open the floor to public testimony. Seeing no public testimony, public testimony time has closed. We're going to go into recess for this bill. I want to thank the department.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.